Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting on February 7, 2023. As the record show, the meeting started promptly at 5:31 and pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law Chapter 38, Section 20. Until March 31, 2023, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. First item of business is a roll call of the Select Board this evening. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Mr. Matters?
Present.
Mr. Dykens and Mr. Nacastro is under the weather and will not be here this evening, either virtually or in person. Okay, first item of business is to move the minutes of January 31, 2023, a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Comments, suggestions, edits? Michael, you did a great job on the nits and nits. Thank you very much. Yeah, once again, thanks. Shereen, Corey, anything?
Good.
I have nothing. Okay, take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. We have a very full agenda this evening. We have, first off, we have a public hearing. It's a continuation of a public hearing of the Cowyard parking restrictions, and that's next up. Then we have a drinking, water, and pumping update. We have public announcements and agenda item requests. Then we have public comments on business agenda, and the business agenda is quite extensive. I'm going to allow public participation on two items this evening, the Commerce Park drainage issue. I see folks here that have a vested interest in the Commerce Park and on the 1610 Main Street West Chatham for a council on an aging facility. I'm going to allow public comment on that as well. And I have solicited the board, and they've agreed to that. It was not in the published agenda, but I will allow public comment because I think both those items are of deep interest to the town. So, first item of business, public hearing. This is, we're not going to read it yet. This is a continuation of a public hearing that we put in a motion, I should say, had on the 3rd of January. Ms. Davis, I see you reaching for the microphone?
No, go ahead.
Okay, all right. We have some folks here that have some input. We have Lieutenant Goddard isn't over there. Why don't you come up? We did receive some photographs. If you'd like to comment on that, on those, then we've had some other information that's come across the wire since we had our public hearing. Lieutenant?
Yes, good evening. The photographs I forwarded to you were taken over the summertime showing the restricted entryway to Cowyard during the height of the summer, how the traffic congestion created an issue there. This is a graphic that represents sort of the amalgamation of the Traffic Safety Committee recommendation and the Waterways Advisory Committee recommendation that you have in your packet. The changes from the Traffic Safety Committee recommendation are simply the north side, from the driveway to the water, is sticker parking would be allowed in that section, and the red area from Old Harbor Road to the driveway would still be no parking at any time. The reason for that restriction would be, as evidenced by the photographs that you saw, it's very narrow with two cars, you know, cars parked on both sides in that driveway. So this would allow for access down to the driveway where the area widens out and you'd be able to access down through there. So Waterways Advisory voted on this motion at the end of last week. There's some other people here that can speak on that if need be, and I spoke with the Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee, and they're in agreement with this recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant. Comments on the Select Board, and then we'll go to the public. Mr. Matters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I was at the Waterways Advisory Committee meeting when they discussed this. I think this is a reasonable recommendation. I think this is something that we can use to move forward, but saying that, I do think the overall review that we've been discussing at some level will keep this on the radar, you know, if future adjustments or suggestions need to be, come in play. But I think moving this, at least this step forward, is reasonable, and I would support it as our next step at this site, recognizing that there may be future discussions down the road.
Thank you, Corey. Mr. Shell?
Just a technical question. I, as I, I'm reading Mr. Keon's memo, and when I read it earlier today, and I just consulted it again, I interpreted the item one at the bottom of the page and item two together as being consistent with your diagram here, with the exception that the, I don't see anything here that reflects the no parking signage for the 25 feet from Old Harbor Road on the south side.
I don't believe that was part of the Waterways Advisory Committee discussion. The reason that the Traffic Safety Committee put that in there, and the 25 feet would be a suggestion, it's purely to allow sightlines and also vehicles turning in not to immediately encounter a vehicle right there at the edge.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I just, as I say, I understood the recommendation not to include that, and I don't know what the, I guess I would ask for clarification of what the committee thought they were doing, if I can get it.
From the Traffic Safety Committee? That's the only one I can speak about?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the Waterways Committee.
Ted, please.
I'm Ted Keon, Coast Resource Director. I'm not sure I can shed light on that because admittedly, that specific issue of the 25 feet on the south side was not discussed. They were concerned about access into the Cowyard Lane, recognizing, as Andy already said, that the entrance does get quite narrow. I can't speak for the committee. I don't think that issue would, or that closure of that one section would be an issue with them. I think it's recognized that, you know, you don't want cars parked right out to the curb line and getting in the way of line of sight. But again, that's my assumption of what they would be. I don't think it would be an issue, but it was not discussed.
Mr. Matters?
No, just to follow up on that, they did not, you know, specifically discuss that little 25-foot section. I think they were talking about what is a reasonable amendment to what is happening now, and also to make sure they recognize, which was item two of the recommendation, you know, the parking on Cowyard Landing should be restricted to Chatham residents, taxpayers, mooring permit holders, and more speci, you know, more importantly, the shellfish permit holders, both resident and non-resident. That element was added to the discussion, but that was not present before, and I think that was, that element, and then the others, the north side, was the thrust of their conversation.
Correct.
Then, how many cars are we eliminating, if you will, with that 25-foot prohibition?
My guess would be one. Most vehicles are somewhere in the 17 to 20-plus feet length, so you'd basically be eliminating one vehicle from that south side spot.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for the overview and the, there's a couple of things that I see problematic in the shellfish permit holders. There's no way to indicate on a car whether you're resident or non-resident, shellfish permit holder, whether you're recreational or commercial. So I'm not sure how this is, how that can be adopted in that respect. We're having a comprehensive review of our landings by Waterways and with recommendations that are coming back, and it's February, so I'm going to make a motion to take no action at this time and refer this to, after we have that comprehensive review done of the landings.
I have a question. Does Shellfish Advisory weigh in? Waterways is weighed in. I know Waterways has a recommendation. Does Shellfish Advisory weigh in?
I believe there's a letter from Shellfish Warden.
Renee have a letter?
There was an initial letter that they sent when this first came up, and I don't know where it is in the packet.
They were definitely concerned about the lack of access for shellfish permit holders. That's correct. That's why Waterways sort of took that into, you know, advisement and modified their previous recommendation. Just to respond to Shereen's comment about, you know, notification, if you will, it's the same thing with mooring permit holders. If you're a mooring permit holder, what we require is a copy of the permit to be placed on the dashboard, and Renee felt that that was also acceptable. You're supposed to have your actual permit on your person when you're shellfishing, but if you made a copy, put that onto the dashboard, that would be the, you know, way to identify yourself.
Ms. Davis?
Okay, so, thank you for that. I just, I guess we'd have to figure out a way to articulate that, but I still am going to stand by my original statement that I, we're doing a comprehensive review of the landings, and I think it's premature to accept any recommendations until we have that. So I did make a motion to take no action tonight.
All right, and I'll second it. Mr. Matters?
Just more procedural than anything, and I fully respect what Ms. Davis is saying. I'd actually like to close out the public hearing, but so, but we have a public hearing, we can't indefinitely, you know, we usually, you know, postpone to a date certain, so I think procedurally, isn't it cleaner, or I need some guidance here, to close up the public hearing, take an action one way or another, in the best benefit of all parties? And my feeling is, I'm comfortable taking an action, and I would support the recommendation on the table as a step forward, and I'm not in any way, shape, or form dismissing the comprehensive view that needs to be done, that maybe other actions even before the summer may end up happening, but at least it's something that we're moving something forward versus the sitting idle. So I would, I would, I totally respect your position. I will vote against the postponement of it, because I'd like to see us take some movement forward.
Okay, I'm going to amend my motion to say, I move to take no action on this recommendation and to close the public hearing, or to vote, unless we have to vote one way or the other. And if that's the case, then I-
That's what I'm asking. Mechanically, don't we have to make a determination?
Yeah, so you should close it, if that's the inclination. After you hear the public comment, I think the motion would be to close it.
Okay, so it's been, I would second that motion as well, but it's also a public hearing, so we need to hear from the public, either folks here and or online. Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Bud &amp; BA Flanagan, who first brought this matter along with five of their neighbors to your attention, I think, about eight months ago. I just wanted to make a couple of comments because I know you have a long agenda tonight. As far as the 25-foot area about which Mr. Shell inquired, I believe under Section 208 of the bylaw, because these are both public ways, you can't park within 25 feet anyway, sightlines and other purposes, so that takes care of that. And I think that the shellfish license matter has been, of course, most of them are sticker holders, obviously. There are some who are not, but I think that is, can readily be addressed by a photocopy. It's my, and again, I'll try to be brief. When a specific problem in a specific location is brought to your attention, and it's referred to two committees who spend, I think between them probably, they had seven or eight separate hearings on this issue, it strikes me that it would be appropriate to heed their guidance, as Mr. Matters said, through the summer. The global approach makes absolutely good sense. It's not just here, but as you know, there are a number of town landings from Battlefield and Bridge Street, as well as others around town, which have limited parking. So I would suggest to you, if you follow the guidance of the people that you charge to hear it, it would be sensible, and you could revisit it when the global report comes forward. I believe the Chair of the Waterways Committee is involved in that global issue, and it was his recommendation, his committee's recommendation, that you act tonight. As far as the motion that Ms. Davis has offered, if you're inclined to take no action, that's perfectly your purview and your choice, but I would suggest that you continue the matter to a date certain after, is it in February when it's coming back to you, I think?
I don't know.
Well, for two months or something, two or three months, to enable some action to be taken and to have public input at that time. So it's, again, up to the board, obviously, as to how you act, but I would suggest a date certain, two or three months down the road, continuation of the public hearing might be an apt course. My, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Any other comment from the public here and or online? Bob Duncanson's hand was up for a second. He's taking it down. Bob, you want to speak? I guess he doesn't. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to indicate that I had spoken with the shellfish warden, and we had agreed, determined that a simple photocopy of someone's license on their dashboard, very similar to what we do with mooring permit holders, would suffice to identify a car as belonging to a person with a valid shellfish permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I see nobody else either raising their hand online and or here. Back to the board. What's the Select Board? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Davis and or Mr. Matters?
I just want to say clarify, I'll defer to Ms. Davis to clarify the motion, and if there's any amendments that she feels comfortable with, then we can vote accordingly.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm asking is not to approve these recommendations at this time and to move to close the hearing. But if the group wants to expend the hearing to a date certain, I'm open to that.
Okay, go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, I mean, I would rather continue the public hearing for a month or two months, whatever. So a date certain and continuing the conversation, that we may vote in favor or not on the proposal versus just, you know, kind of shutting it off and cutting the ties. So I'm comfortable with up to a two-month extension.
Okay, I can agree with that.
Okay. Mr. Shell?
I just, first of all, I agree with that. I would like to have a clear, unequivocal recommendation jointly from the committees that have looked at this. I think we have that in a sense, but given that this is a matter of some, shall we say, interest to the community, I think it's fair for us to say we'd like a very clear recommendation from the relevant committees.
Yeah, and I echo that sentiment absolutely 100%. So Shereen, if you would withdraw your motion, I'll withdraw my second, and then perhaps Corey can have another motion to continue the, continue the hearing.
I withdraw. Go ahead.
And I withdraw my second as well. Mr. Matters?
All right, so I just, I recommend that we continue the public hearing until April, give me two months out there. April 4th?
Sounds good.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
I'll second.
A second, okay, good. End of vote. Corey?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a drinking, water, and pumping update. Mr. Barr, are you out there in drinking water land? I see you, Tom. Welcome.
Yes, I am. How you doing? Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board. Yeah, so a quick update on the water pumping. Well 4 is still online. We're pumping about five hours a day from there at around 600 gallons per minute. We had the latest PFAS samples were taken on January 5. Those results came back non-detect, which is a good thing. We're hoping to take Well 4 offline for a little break once Well 3 comes back online, which was off for some routine maintenance. We're hoping to have that back on by the end of this week and take Well 4 off for a little bit. So other than that, Well 4 is in good shape. Wells 10 and 11 is kind of on hold right now. Robert Hour worked on finishing up the installation of the communication lines, and now they're just waiting for the roof tresses to be scheduled to arrive. I was over there today, and Robert Hour told me that they were hoping to have them in next week or the week after, so that they'll get started on 10 and 11 again shortly. The temporary treatment plant at Training Field is still currently offline, and we'll be turning that back on hopefully in May, once the weather breaks. As far as the permanent plant, we received the Massachusetts DEP's approval for the pilot study, so that came in on the 25th of January. The Environmental Policy Act application was submitted on January 27, and Westman Sampson engineers are preparing the 100% design drawings and the Mass DEP WS24, which is the approval to construct facility permit application. We'll hope to have that in by the end of February. So that's everything on those upcoming projects or continuing projects. And then as far as the pumping comparison for January, we were up 6.5% from 2022, so up a little bit. Mostly in the beginning of the month, we had a few little spikes due to some water breaks, which we're going to see at the beginning of this month as well, because we had a bunch over the past weekend. So, any questions?
Well, thank you, Tom. Just, Shereen has her hand raised, and then I've got a question. Shereen, go ahead, and then I'll follow.
Just a quick question, and I apologize if you've answered this before, but how long is the MIPA application process? How long does that take? Both the application submissions and process?
I'm not sure on that. The engineering firm's been handling that part, but I can get that answer for you. I think once they, yeah, once it's submitted, I'm hoping within a couple of weeks, we should have an answer for that.
So it is a short period? I guess that's-
Yeah, it should be, maybe a month or so.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Okay, Tom, I just was looking at the pumping data. Is there any correlation with weekends? I was looking, I'm looking at my calendar right now as we speak, but I just wondered if there's any correlation with weekends. And then, do we also think there are more folks that are staying around more in January than in past years? I would posit that. 6.5% is a fairly decent increase year over year.
No, it is a high increase. We have had a more people staying. We've had less seasonal turnoffs than we have in the past years. So there are more people that are sticking around.
Yeah, okay.
But it's definitely, you can see, just like you said, on weekends, there's a little bit higher spikes, and, but you got to compare, like, so the weekend for '22 might not have been the weekend for '23, so that's where the, this chart gets a little iffy, if you will. You just got to kind of look through the dates to really compare and contrast.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you, Tom. And the water levels, are we doing water levels? Are we doing better?
They're starting to climb up, but I'm still a little hesitant to give a green light on much, you know? That's just me being cautious.
Any other comments or questions for Tom and the water? Okay, all righty, we're on to our, we're on to our public announcement and agenda- All righty, we're onto our, we're onto our public announcement, agenda item request. Are there public announcements from anybody in the select board? Any public announcements from anybody in the audience present here and/or online? Okay, any agenda item requests by the select board this evening? Any agenda item requests by those present and/or online? Okay, I see none. Okay, and then on to public comments on our business agenda. Having seen no public announcements or agenda item requests, we do have a fairly robust business agenda this evening. As I just mentioned, we are going to allow public comment on Commerce Park drainage issue and on 1610 Main Street. We also have a presentation on electronic voting, a recommendation, or a recommendation, I should say. We have a review of the budget for general government, community development, public safety, and capital plan. We have a committee review follow-up for determine the oversight of the trap dock operation. And we have committee appointments that I'm going to not call this evening as an agenda item because of the absence of Mr. De Castro. And unfortunately, I'm not here next week, so we're going to push appointments out for a couple of weeks, which I know may stymie some, but I don't, I think it's only fair to do that. We like to do that with a full board, so I will not call that as an agenda item this evening. Any public comments on electronic voting, budget review, committee review of the trap dock, our trap dock operation? Anybody in the public? I see a hand raised out there. It looks like it's Frank Messina. Mr. Messina?
Thank you very much. I apologize.
No problem.
I appreciate the fact that you're going to allow comment during the drainage issue and the 1610 Main Street, but I just wanted to get a couple of things in quickly, if I may. First, on the drainage issue in Commerce Park, I think the whole issue of property maintenance is something that the board or the town has to address at some point in a little bit better. I know it's, quote, private property, but it's also a street in which I'm sure the street is clean by the town, and the snow is plowed, police and fire. And I think the board has been aggressive here in the past when we had a situation where someone was, had a little too much junk on their property, and they took an action, and town meeting voted for a, to put some funds aside. I would hope during your conversation, and I know you've got the town council here, is that we are aggressive here in recognizing that this is a public problem, not just a private problem, for the people trying to have access and also for safety. I would just quickly announce that, you know, from my perspective, 40 years ago, in another town I was involved in, we had a property maintenance code which had minimal standards for private property. We're not talking about cutting your grass, we're talking about things where public safety's involved. So I think there's precedent for that kind of activity, and hopefully you guys could take a hard look at that. If I may, just briefly, 1610 Main Street, I'm happy to find out that the COA board did take an action unanimous and approve it to go forward, and I would commend this board for your aggressive action to, to once again make this happen. Thank you very much.
Okay, Frank, thank you. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, either in person and/or online, so off to our first business item, agenda, business agenda item, our electronic voting recommendation. The finance subcommittee has done a wonderful job, that their report, I thought, was just spot-on on the report that they submitted to the, to the select board in summary of this, of this issue. As you know, Mr. Litchfield as moderator has polled the town meeting in years past, and last time he polled town meeting, it was kind of resounding, came back in a positive manner to have electronic voting. So anyway, that superb memo, extremely well-written, very clear, and I will turf it off to, I see, we have Mr. Daniel on, on board here. Stephen, I would love to have you pipe in, if you will. I see Mr. Litchfield is here again as well, and he can certainly speak up anytime he would like to as well, so love to hear from you, Stephen.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would like to start by offering the moderator the opportunity to make any comments or observations for context or otherwise, since I think at some point during all of this, he was the point of the speaker for making this happen. So Bill, I don't know if, anything you'd like to start us out with?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet, you bet.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I should say.
All good, all good.
Bill Litchfield as town moderator. All I want to say is to essentially echo what Mr. Dyken said. The voters have been asked over the years several times, and the level of enthusiasm has been growing slowly until last year, when it rose dramatically after four or five hours. Forty or 50 or 60, Stephen knows the number, because he spent, he and his colleagues, one of whom is here, have spent a tremendous amount of time in this effort. Many, many towns, including Orleans and Eastham, have this. Every town that has it is enthusiastic about it, aside from the speed factor and the accuracy factor. It also provides privacy, so we can all continue to participate in our legislative body, have the privacy that we enjoy in some other forums. But most importantly, I want to, again, echo what Chairman Dyken said about the, the efforts of Stephen and his committee, who have done yeoman's service, and I'll sit down and listen to Stephen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Stephen?
Thank you, Bill. I, too, would like to start with thanks to both Tracy Shields and Bart Madison for their participation in the Finance Committee's working group in this regard. Superlative effort. I will, I guess, begin by deeming this report to have been read by the select board. One addendum I will note is that there's, we were supposed to have slip-sheated in a new last page, which indicated that the Finance Committee voted unanimously nine to nothing last Tuesday to endorse the recommendations of the working group in this regard. So with that as a note, I'll take any questions that, that the select board may have, and if we want to hold on those, we have Sean McPeak, who's the manager at Meridia Interactive Solutions, standing by to give us an overview of their system, which is the system that has been recommended by the working group as a result of its efforts. So I'll, I'll kick it back to you, Jeff. Questions now for us, if any? And/or shall we go for a little, little drive-through of the system?
Yeah. Thank you, Stephen, very much. I think, Sean, it's, it's your, your deal here now. Why don't we do a little drive-through? And two of our members, Dean De Castro and Michael Shell, have seen these demonstrations, so they're quite familiar with it. Shereen, Cory, and I have not. So if you could give us a little drive-through, that'd be great. Thank you.
Certainly. Hi, everyone. My name is Sean McPeak. I'm with Meridia. Thank you for having me today. I can certainly go ahead and show you a variety of slides about the presentation, and really, this is about any questions that you may have before we move forward. So let me share my screen, if you will. You should see on the screen, two items here, and this is the voting hardware. It consists of a simple voting clicker. The clicker can be customized based on the town's logo and color scheme, but in essence, it has five buttons. We currently work with 50 towns in Massachusetts, and a large number of them have chosen to brand the clicker. And the clicker is the device to the left that has 1, 2, 3 on it. They decided to brand the clicker and only leave the yes and no button remaining. So they take away visually all the buttons but the yes and no, and I've taught the Chatham about branding your clickers as well, so that is something that we can do. And then the second component of the system is the long-range receiver. This is a receiver that'll be most likely situated up on the stage or next to your moderator, select board, and that is what receives the signals from the keypad and collects the vote in real time. To give you an idea of what the display looks like, is as the vote is coming in, this is an example of one such display. So the number of yeses will be shown, number of no's, and the total. And we can choose to repress this information during the meeting. So typically, what will happen is, just as they do today, the moderator will call the motion, they will open up the voting, as just as they do with a hand or voice vote. When they open the voting, everyone will just simply grab the clicker that they have, and they'll press the green button for yes and the no button for no. As soon as they press that button, the votes will be shown up on the screen, and where it says total 50, that number will be, will be clicking up. So 50, 100, 250. The system can collect up to 2,000 votes in two and a half seconds, but my experience shows that people don't vote that quickly. So for an average question, you might want to keep the vote open for 20 to 30 seconds. It's all at the moderator's discretion, so there's not a countdown clock that tells the moderator the vote is closed. The moderator will simply look at the total and say, there's about, you know, 400 people here, 300 people here, 800 people here. Once it gets to around, if there's 800 people, around 725, 750, he may just verbally says, all right, everyone, it's your last chance to vote. And then, once a few more votes tick in, he can choose to close the vote, at which point you will see the number of yeses and number of no's. And up on the top of the screen is a large bar that'll say if the vote has passed or not. The system can calculate simple majority, two-thirds, four-fifths. So for the more complex votes that require, you know, the two-thirds or four-fifths or nine-tenths majority, it really saves a lot of time in calculating that for you. You also have the ability to show it more like a traditional town meeting, where instead of, you're hiding how each person voted, you can simply show how each individual keypad voted in a grid of this manner. So on the back of each of the clicker is a keypad ID. That keypad ID will be, if you buy 800 clickers, it'll say 1 to 800. We don't know who's holding which clicker, we just simply know the ID of each clicker. So as the votes come in, the individual squares light up as such. Some towns prefer this view because they feel it's the closest to a traditional Massachusetts town meeting, where everyone raised their hand, and visually you can see who's raising their hand. This manner lets you see the votes as they come in, how many innocent hand raises there are, but doesn't show you that John Smith is raising his hand, just simply shows you an anonymous keypad ID. We've done events, you know, typically all over. Here is a, an event in Wenham. During the pandemic, the events have really gone over into a variety of different venues for these town meetings. So whether it's out in the football field where it's tented, in Lychester, we had to do it in a large warehouse, in Sterling, we use the airport. But now that the COVID emergency is, and coming to an end, most people are back in the typical school auditorium, gymnasium format. So the system works great in such a venue. With that, I'll open up the questions. If anyone has any questions specifically for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Sean. That was great, you gave us a visual, and I liked the grid on the, with the green and red votes, if you will. That's pretty cool. Go to Cory, and then go around the horn here.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. The only question I have is, you know, we're talking about buying or leasing whatever package program we were looking at, and we're going to have to determine how many clickers, you know, make sense for the town of Chatham for a typical town meeting. So we, we have that basic expense. In the event of something like, like, you know, the regionalization, where we had a far larger turnout of voters, is there an opportunity for us to, like, lease additional clickers on a one-time basis to the system? Do we have to buy more clickers? You know, I think, you know, those are probably only happen once in a while, so I don't want to buy, you know, 300 clickers that are going to be sitting in a closet. So what's our options as far as, you know, as needs progress or events progress with our, with these packages?
Certainly. Well, the good news is, just as you mentioned, typically when the attendance is going to be large, you know about it ahead of time, whether it's a school vote or a contentious item on the warrant, you have some time before the town meeting comes up where you can plan accordingly. In either of those cases, you can either rent or purchase additional keypads from us. So you can rent them on a town meeting basis, the, the cost is roughly $10 per clicker per the town meeting, or you can simply buy them and keep them for future programs. So the choice is yours.
I thank you. Ms. Davis?
Cory, Stephen, if I could just jump in, Mr. Chairman, with a couple of observations?
Sure.
So in the annual, since 2006, in our annual town meeting, our lowest attendance was 203 voters in 2020. Our highest one was 861 voters in 2009. For a special town meeting, our lowest attendance was 224 in 2021. The highest relative to regionalization, 2010, was 1,203 voters. Sean and the working group have reviewed these numbers, the, the recommendation that has fallen out of the work in Sean's experience is that we purchase 800 clickers. We can certainly get more, we can certainly rent more, as Sean noted. But there is some, some context and some, some rough math behind the working group's recommendation of 800 clickers.
I'll take one. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Sean, for the presentation, the working group for their work. This was a really good report, and I'm all in favor of it. I just have one technical question. When I, I saw the display that displayed the motion and then the vote display was underneath, the, the motion, if, or the article that was being presented, that's obviously can be edited real time if there's a motion that changes that, or there's some addition to that?
It can, as fast as you can type.
Okay, great.
So it's, it's pretty straightforward. There's two options that people use. Either, since you have the requirement to publish the warrant ahead of time, although in every town meeting I've been to, there's always a change or two by the time we actually get there. But you have an information, so you can create an agenda where you're simply copying and pasting the articles from the warrant into our software. And then at any point, you can add a new item, or you can do an amendment to an item, or just simply edit one by typing it. So as fast as you can type, you can do those things that are just mentioned.
Great. I have one more question for the committee, if that's okay.
Please.
For the committee, when you were talking about the numbers, you came up with the 800. I guess I'm just thinking, what if, what, and we purchased the 800, what if by chance, for unknown reasons, 850 people showed up? We weren't prepared for that. How, how do we go about the voting system for that particular? Do 50 people not vote with a voting machine? Or how, how are we proposing that that would work?
Steve, if I, if I may, I actually just had this situation come up in Westford.
Please, Sean.
So, so I was at their special town meeting in the fall, and they had 500 clickers and 550 people showed up. So what they did is they separated out the voters who did not have clickers, they actually put them on the bleachers in the auditorium, and they used our system for the 500 voters, and then they did a manual hand count, and we added that to the totals of the people who didn't have keypads.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm not sure what the reaction's going to be to the, to that at a town meeting, but I guess that solves the problem to some degree, right?
It does get a count, but-
Yeah, you get the count.
I'm going to go to Mr. Shell, and then you, Cory.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Yeah, and I, let me start by saying, I don't want to preclude anybody from asking any question that occurs to them, but having said that, Dean and I did participate in one-hour sessions with both of the companies that were in the final round with the, with the committee. I won't speak for Dean, except to say that between the two of us, I have a lot of confidence that we asked every question we could possibly think of in terms of just the kind of thing that Shereen just asked, which is what if? We had quite a large number of what-ifs, and, and I, amongst the various things that Meridia offers, I certainly reached the conclusion that it would be highly unlikely that we would be in a situation like the one that Shereen hypothesized. Although I had an opinion about what the right number was, I'm prepared to defer to the committee, having thought about that and, and worked on it and considered it and consulted with the, with the moderator. My bottom line is that I thought that, apart from the fact that the committee did a terrific job, and I have a lot of confidence in their, their work and their recommendation- job, and I have a lot of confidence in their work and their recommendation, and as is reflected in the memo, which is also terrific. I felt that Meridia was by far and away the best choice here, and I'm just very, very comfortable with that recommendation.
Okay, Michael, thank you. And I will speak for a select board member, Nick Castro. Please indicate that I support the Finance Committee recommendation on electronic voting, having viewed the demonstrations and the supports taking the money out of ARPA, which brings my question to bear. Are we going to, we're going to, I guess the recommendation is to purchase this, Jill, and Alex and you, I think, have weighed in that we can use ARPA funds? Is that correct? And the overall cost is what? Now, I have one technical question for Sean. Off to you, Jill.
Yes, so this would come out of the town's direct ARPA funds. We would not have to apply to the county for it, so we already have them in hand. With the select board's vote to approve the use of those funds, it absolutely falls within the categories for appropriate uses of it.
Oh, super, okay. So, and then, Sean, just on the use frequency hopping, short-range radio frequency hardware and software, have you ever had a problem with communication between the vote, the clickers, and the tally? Have you ever had a problem?
I have not had a problem at Massachusetts town meetings as of yet. And we've done, since 2017, we've done probably about 100 of those. I have had a problem. We did one of them at a hotel in the Boston Harbor, when a naval ship came in, and they blasted their sonar. That did take the system out, but it doesn't make inaccurate data, it just simply doesn't let you use it while that signal's going on. So the system operates on 2.4 gigahertz. It's a radio frequency signal. And the system will function unless the entire system is taken down, meaning that something is blocking every channel within that RF frequency. And there's 80 channels in that frequency.
Yeah, and you avoid the internet on purpose, I think. All the vendors, I think, made that point, and the committee made that point as well.
Yeah, so what you're buying is you're buying an offline, close-range, radio-frequency voting system. So what that means is, the system is 100% protected from any internet-based attacks, and it's 100% protected from any distance attacks. So the only people that can access the system are the ones inside your meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we've had Mr. Metters, and then, Mr. Metters, and then...
I just want to ask a question from your experience with all the other communities. I want to be kind of careful how I ask this, but I'll tread lightly. So every clicker is just, it's a device. One person has it, they push whatever determination they want, and it's recorded, so it's not assigned to a certain person. With turnouts at our town meetings, we have voters, we have non-voters. In the communities that you've had experience with, has there been any policy changes or segregation of how the seating with voters and non-voters have been set up in the past? Because we're somewhat flexible at times. I mean, I remember before I got involved in town government, I used to sit in the non-voting bleachers, because I found it more comfortable to sit up there. So is there been any adjustments made in seating, or, you know, of other communities with these systems?
Well, it typically depends if they're going to solely use the electronic voting for their town meeting. What I've noticed is that many moderators will do voice votes for some items, and then go to electronic voting for others. The towns that do use electronic voting for every item, they do not have to segregate non-voters from voters, because those individuals that are voters are assigned a clicker, and that's the only mechanism to vote. The non-voters do not have access to that clicker. So where their seating isn't as important anymore. But the majority of towns still keep the old process in place, where they do segregate non-voters from voters, simply because it's at the moderator's discretion to use different forms of voting during the meeting. So they may use a voice vote, or they may use a clicker. For example, I've never once seen clickers used to close a town meeting. That's always an anonymous voice vote, and then everyone goes on.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Corey. So just in summary, if I might, 72 towns in Massachusetts have approved or do use electronic voting. I'm not sure how many use Meridia, but I'm extremely comfortable with taking the recommendation of the Finance Committee Electronic Voting Working Group's recommendation of Meridia, and really comfortable with Mr. Shell and Mr. Nick Castro being on that, or having seen demonstrations of all three vendors that they had demonstrations with, and I think Meridia is the choice. I want to particularly thank Stephen Daniel, Barbara Madison, and Tracy Shields for an extraordinary effort here, and really a great summary report. And I know you spent a lot of time researching this, and very thoughtfully, so we very much appreciate your time and effort. And so I'm going to look to the Select Board for a motion, and a second, I'm going to look to Mr. Shell for a motion, please.
I would move that we approve the, and accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee to purchase the system from Meridia.
And expending ARPA funds in the...
And using the ARPA funds, yes.
Super. And a second, please.
Second.
Super. Any further discussion? I think this is an absolute no-brainer. It's a step forward, it's wonderful. So a vote. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much to everybody that was in this effort. Phenomenal job. Great, thank you.
Jeff, can I just weigh in with one final observation from the working group, please?
Yes, sir, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Sean for all this help and support to the working group, and his flexibility in responding to numerous inquiries and questions and scenarios. So thank you, Sean, for all of your help with this. I think, Jeff, as a working group, we think it important that for the town to transition to this electronic voting platform successfully, that there be some intentional, probably formal implementation working group. It's obviously not up to us or me to, you know, I guess formally make that recommendation, but there's a lot of things to be thought through, whether it's distribution, whether it's collection of the devices, whether it's, you know, what happens if the receiver goes down? How do we deploy the reserve receiver that we'd be purchasing? There are communities who are at kind of the point of the spear in leading and collaborating with other communities on their engagement and rolling listings out. Wayland, in particular, is extremely helpful. But we would strongly encourage town leadership to think about creating some kind of an implementation task force to make sure this all works out as we hope and plan it will.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. And, you know, I'm making the kind of broad assumption, but you brought it to bear, that Jill and her team will carry that out. And so I appreciate that notion, and I know Mark and Craig have been involved with this along the way. So Jill, your reaction, I'm sure you'll accept the responsibility.
Certainly. And I know that the town clerk, Shawna, and the IT team has been involved in this, so definitely looking forward for town meeting use. And if there's any other expanded use, we could use it for community polling. We're in for that.
Yeah.
So we can work on that implementation group.
Super. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Shell, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, one of the reasons that I was very, very enthusiastic about Meridia was my sense, and I want to state for the record, that I believe and anticipate that they will not only have a vendor or vendee relationship with us, but that it'll be more of an ongoing relationship, that we can look to them for help when we need it. And so I want to put that on the record, that that was material to my believing they were the best choice for this project.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. That's a wrap on that one. Okay, on to Commerce Park Lake.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
Because of the nature of this discussion, it's not relevant to all the private roads in Chatham, but it's specific to the area of Commerce Park. I'm recusing myself from this agenda item due to the nature of my relationship with the business that leases property in Commerce Park South.
Oh, Shereen, we're going to miss you.
I know.
Yeah, good, okay. All righty. Should I turf it to Bob first? Just a little preamble here. I'm the one that put this item on the agenda for the Select Board's consideration. Having already read Town Council's summary opinions, et cetera, I was still willing to put it on our agenda. I think that there are extenuating circumstances here that need a public airing, and I think we need to get public input, and I think we need to hear what the issues are. This is a longstanding body of water in Commerce Park. Should you turn to the southeast and take that road to the south? It's at the bottom of the hill there. You can literally go swimming, you can lose a car, and it's pretty bad. So I've been down there numerous times to check it out. If you go down on a rainstorm, it's really bad. So anyway, I'm going to turf it to Bob first. We do have Town Council on the line. Again, I have said earlier that we will allow public comment. Where we end up, I don't quite know yet, but I am looking forward to having public input. Okay, Bob, off to you, and then to Pat Costello, and then to the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you rightly pointed out, this is not a new issue. This has been a longstanding issue of flooding on Commerce Park South. As I'm sure everybody's familiar, Commerce Park basically has a circular roadway, Commerce Park South and Commerce Park North. And a number of years ago, the two cul-de-sacs, originally it was two cul-de-sacs on each of those roads, but then, when Chick's Way was developed, a connector road was put in, tying the two cul-de-sacs together, as well as Chick's Way being put in. The flooding area is at the low point of Commerce Park South, and review of plans for several businesses in that area have indicated that there is a drainage system there comprised of two catch basins tied into four leaching pits. And over the years, and most recently, we've received, the town has received, I've received a number of concerns regarding the fact that those catch basins were not being properly maintained, they were not being cleaned on a regular basis, and therefore flooding to varying degrees took place. When the most recent situation started, primarily last fall, when we had some of those real heavy downpours, you know, two, three, four inches in less than 12-hour periods, the flooding became extensive. There is also more limited flooding on Commerce Park North, but that area is flatter, and so it doesn't puddle to the degree that it does on Commerce Park South. And that area also drains better than Commerce Park South does, just because of the volume of water that heads toward that low point. So in, you know, 95%, 97% of the time, you can drive around via Commerce Park North and access all the businesses on the north side, the east side, the Chick's Way area. And frankly, most of the businesses can be accessed either by coming in Commerce Park South and then stopping just prior to the flooding, or coming in via Commerce Park North and the connector road between the two cul-de-sacs. We did do some research to determine, or just confirm, that the roads are, in fact, privately, private roads. The original developer of the Commerce Park area was dissolved back in 1995, based on records at the state level, and the name of that developer was Chatham Industry, Inc. We have also confirmed that most of the principals in Chatham Industry, Inc., are basically no longer with us, are deceased, or don't live in Massachusetts anymore, and basically have no connection to the old Chatham Industries, Inc. So it's safe to say it's basically a phantom, or a phantom organization or corporation remaining, if you will. Similarly, it does not appear, based on any of the records that we've been able to come up with, that the developer ever conveyed the roadway to private properties on either side. As you're probably aware, in residential subdivisions, it's very common for the developer to convey the roadway up to the center line to the private properties that are adjacent to the road. That does not appear to be the case in Commerce Park. And in fact, one of the deeds that we reviewed specifically stated, no fee in Commerce Park South is conveyed hereby, indicating that, for all intents and purposes, the roads have remained with the developer and have not been conveyed to any other entity. However, I had a recent, last week, I had a conversation with a local engineer who was involved in the Chick's Way when that was created, and he indicated that based on some deed research that he had done as part of that effort, that some deeds in Commerce Park may speak to the roadway. But it was not clear. He was going to dig up his files from way back when Chick's Way was done and provide those to the town. I have not received them yet. So at this point, it does not appear that there is any entity responsible for the roads. There have been several attempts that we are aware of over the years to form an association of some point with everybody in Commerce Park, but none of those attempts have been successful. So right now, there does not appear to be any private entity that is responsible for the roads. Town Council has weighed in and indicated, and you have his opinions as part of your agenda pack, and the Town Council is available today as well, that the town has very limited standing to undertake any actions with regard to the current flooding. As I indicated, from a public safety standpoint, access can either come from the south or around by the north side. This is a little bit different than some residential subdivisions, where the road is only one way in and one way out. And in that case, the public safety aspects of the road would be much higher than they are in this case, where the road is basically a circle. And so if there was any public need to access that with emergency vehicles, knowing that the road is flooded, they could simply drive around the north side with very minimal, if you will, increase in time to get from one side to the other. It's not that big an area. So with that, I think I will not say anything further, and leave it up to any questions from the board, or if Town Council Pat Costello wants to weigh in any further.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to go to Pat. I see you're online. Pat, can you just... I'm going to go, thank you, Dr. Bob, for that. I appreciate that. And I'm going to go to Pat Costello, who's here. And Pat, we have, we do have your memos, but if you would just summarize kind of your findings for us, I'd really appreciate it. Again, I don't know where this is going to head, but it's just, it really has become, it's pretty much a hazard, in my mind, but I just want to hear from you what we have as options, if any. So, Pat, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. This is a very complicated situation in many respects. I've had numerous discussions with Dr. Dunkinson and with Jill relative to the matter. I don't think there's any question that this is not a town way, or a piece of property, for that matter, that the town has any proprietary interest in or control over. So accordingly, our avenues of recourse to take any action here would either have to be based in a specific statute, or based in a nuisance abatement-type situation that would fall to the Board of Health under General Laws, Chapter 111. We have discussed both of those avenues, and the biggest impediment we keep running into is the fundamental principle of Massachusetts law, and most state law, established in Massachusetts by the Constitution, that money raised by taxation can only be used for public purposes, and not for the advantage of private individuals. So that puts us in a situation where any action that the town would undertake would, in essence, constitute an expenditure of public funds, whether it's by use of town-paid staff, or whether it's by implementation of construction or design measures that would improve, whether it's the drainage facilities or other aspects of the physical improvements with regard to the road. It's going to involve an expenditure of public funds. Now, there is not a lot of definitive case law in this point, as you can imagine. Perhaps the most salient legal guidance we have is an opinion of the justices of the Supreme Court rendered back in 1943, relative to a proposed law that the General Court had adopted to allow public funds to be expended to clear ice and snow from private ways. from private ways. And the, the justices did opine at that point in time, that this is one of those situations where there are both public and private interests in play. And the justices did ultimately conclude that the state legislature could adopt a law that authorized cities and towns to spend money on removal of ice and snow from private ways, because of the public expedience or interest involved in maintaining safe transportation for, for users of those private ways. It only applies to private ways open to public travel. And there is, in fact, a statute that was adopted at that time, Chapter 40, Section 6C, that does allow towns to appropriate funds for the purpose of removing ice and snow. There is another statute on the books, Chapter 40, Section 6N, that allows towns and cities to adopt bylaws and ordinances allowing for temporary repairs to be made to private ways. There are numerous towns that do have such bylaws. Chatham does not have such a bylaw, so that option is not available to us right now. Most of the communities that do have such a bylaw are authorized to perform, again, temporary repairs to private ways. But they also have a mechanism therein to require either a certain number of abutters to those private ways to petition the town for such improvements. And they, the bylaws do authorize the towns to assess betterments to those private property owners, who, who in effect benefit from the temporary repairs. As noted, we do not have such a bylaw. We do not have that right to affect the temporary repairs. Now, let's be realistic. In, in many situations, the expenditure of public funds can advance both public and private interests. In those situations, what, what the courts have determined over the years is that if the dominant motive for the expenditure is a public one, incidental private benefits will not invalidate the expenditure. If, however, the dominant motive is to promote a private purpose, the expenditure will be invalid, even if there is an incidental public purpose being served as well. So in this particular situation, my biggest concern is that the remedy or fix for the flooding problem on these ways appears to be a design or infrastructure one. It will cost a significant sum of money to improve the drainage or expand the drainage facilities serving these roadways. And if the town incurs that fund, I would suggest that the predominant benefit to be realized by that expenditure would be to those private property owners who, who bought the way, and to the owner of, of the roadways, the now dissolved corporate entity. Clearly, there is some public interest in maintaining the right to pass and, and utilize private ways within the town. However, there is a limit in terms of what the town can do. If we choose to expend substantial sums of, of public funds in this particular situation to facilitate the resolution of the flooding problem on, on Commerce Park, where do we draw the line? Any other private property, private road in, in the town could experience similar such situations, and look at this particular assistance as precedent. How would the town, how would the select board draw the lines or, or develop parameters for the expenditure of, of these funds? The bottom line is, all funds that the town expends have to be authorized by statute. Chapter 40 is, is rife with exceptions to the general rules establishing particular purposes or particular types of funds the towns can create. There is no express statutory authority right now that would allow a town to invest substantial sums of money in improving or reconstructing private roads in the ordinances that serve them, such as drainage facilities. From a legal perspective, that's my concern. On the other hand, I do understand the public safety or public convenience issues that are involved here. And I, I would suggest that statutorily, should this matter arise to the level of being a nuisance condition, perhaps the Board of Health could intervene to abate the nuisance condition. But then again, as, as we know, in those types of situations, more often than not, the town will then lean private property that it expends money on to recoup or collect the public funds that were expended on these private improvements. That, in a nutshell, is the legal situation.
Tea, great, Pat. Thank you. A little tongue-in-cheek. But honestly, Pat, thank you. I, I, I kind of, I read your memos, and I kind of know that's where we are, between a rock and a hard place, if you will. And I think an argument can be made that, you know, the private interests haven't, you know, it's been there for years. So it's been, you know, it's been a lake for years, and the public really can't access the area where, you know, conveniently. And it's just, with a town like Chatham, it's difficult to, to look at it and say, "We're not going to do anything about it." It's just, anyway. But I know we're between a rock and a hard place from a legal perspective, and I know it's very difficult. But I think we have some mechanisms, we could have some mechanisms at work. And I'm going to turf it to Corey, and I have my own thoughts, and then to Michael as well. And, you know, we, and private interests haven't done anything. It's been a hazard for years. And I don't, I think it's a health hazard as well. Thank you.
All right. Hey, Pat, being one of the non-attorneys on the committee here, I get to ask these kind of questions, because I don't understand some of this stuff. So when we were talking about expending taxpayer funds, fully understand that. In most of these court cases or scenarios, I believe the funding is the assumption that it would take care of the majority of the, of the funding for the project. Obviously, we don't want to take taxpayers' money to benefit a private entity in whole. Is there any court cases or any scenarios that are out there that we might be able to compare to our situation, when you've got private and public interests involved, that there's a accepted percentage of public, private, or town funding going into a project, like 20%, 30%, where, you know, there is clear public-private interest? Obviously, the private interest probably trumps, you know, the expense. So they would have to take the brunt of the expense of a project. But we could, as a municipality, donate a certain percentage of, to a project to cover the public interest of that project, I guess is what I'm trying to ask. Is there any history of court cases or any scenarios that would be, that we could hang our hat on, that are, that would be options?
Unfortunately, Corey, there, there is no such strict, you know, mathematical or percentage guideline to go by in any of these cases. What the, the justices in their 1943 opinion, as well as courts in, in subsequent cases, have focused on is what is the dominant motive for the expenditure of the funds? If, if the dominant motive is to protect or advance a public interest, then there should be no issue with the validity of the expenditures. If, however, the dominant motive is to advance a private purpose or a private interest, then it would run contrary to the constitutional requirements that funds, public funds cannot be expended for private benefit. So I think what we have to do is look at each particular situation, based on its specific facts and the circumstances related thereto, and try to come to that conclusion. If, if in this particular situation, the way the situation currently exists, we can establish or assert that this has become, notwithstanding the lack of action or what you may want to call it by the private interests involved, a, a public dilemma, a, a situation where the public interest is being harmed, then I think the expenditure of funds could be justified. I think a very significant circumstance that we have to be mindful of is that there are, there are technically multiple types of private ways. There is an animal in Massachusetts called a private way open to public travel that is actually accepted by the select board in a town, in the town meeting, much as a public way is. Yet it still remains a privately-held roadway, yet it's deemed to be opened or dedicated to public use. This is not such a roadway. This is a private way purely and simply because it is laid out on, on land that is privately-owned and, and the care, custody, and control of private property owners. Technically speaking, whomever has control over this roadway, or these roadways, could shut them down to public use tomorrow. That is a point that the Supreme Judicial Court justices did note in their 1943 decision. They emphasized that the appropriation of public funds for removal of ice and snow is a temporary remedy. It's not a permanent expenditure in a capital improvement or a capital repair, so to speak. So I think we have to consider that as well. To your point, I think working together with private property owners is certainly something we could consider doing. But to my knowledge, no one has stepped up and, and stepped forward to, to offer their participation or involvement with the town. So right now, it seems to be the town is the only party that's expressing an interest to move forward, with the exception of, I do believe there was one property owner that, that did do some minor repairs previously.
Appreciate the response. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Corey. Mr. Schell.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm just going to toss out what, what I would do if I hadn't heard all of this. And, and, and then I'm going to let you tell me, you know, what kind of a risk I'm taking. I, I would, I would try to break this down into smaller bites. And I, I'm going to start with the assumption that the property owners, the abutting property owners are not interested, and even if solicited, would not participate in, in any collaborative project to solve the problem. I hope that's not right, but, but for purposes of what I'm about to say, I'm, I'm assuming that. I think from the, from the town's point of view, and from the public interest point of view, there's no doubt in my mind that but for the research that you've done, even you had some doubt as to whether this is a public way, or whether this is a, whether it has a, a public feature to it that is of concern to the, to the town. And there's no doubt in my mind that the people who drive in there, myself included, to the extent that it's impassable, or that it's a problem, wonder why Chatham doesn't fix it. Now, that's a, that is a concern. Even if it were to elicit a, a frivolous lawsuit, for example, it's a concern, because there will be funds expended to dismiss the lawsuit with the, the, the research that you've done. So I think we have an interest of sorts that I would say justifies at least examining into how do we fix the problem. In other words, to get, to assess either with the use of the DPW or whomever, what would it take to resolve this problem? Now, there may be, that may, it may be a simpler problem or a simpler task than, than I'm suggesting. But I would do that in the beginning, and at least say to my, say to us, "Okay, now we know the size of the problem. We know the size of the risk that you're articulating." At that point, there are a number of ways you could go. One, you could decide to take the risk, and you could help us with exactly how much that risk is. I suppose we could also go get a declaratory judgment that, that helped us either conclude that this is a soluble problem, or that as we've presented it, with a case to be made that it is a public concern, we get a court to, to, to help us. I, I, all I'm saying, I, I'm not suggesting that as a lawyer, as a solution. What I'm really saying is, I appreciate all your work, but from my perspective, I'd like you to see if you can't figure out a way that we can solve this problem that doesn't necessarily eliminate the risk, but minimizes it to a point where it is, as a business matter, it is reasonable to take the risk for the town.
Okay. Let me just address the risk itself, first and foremost, so we understand what we're looking at. With regard to the expenditure of funds, all it takes under Massachusetts law is a 10 taxpayer lawsuit. 10 citizens of the town could file a complaint in court claiming that the town of Chatham is expending funds for a non-public purpose in violation of law. If that type of action is so filed, that joins the issue right there. We get a determination from the court as to whether or not we can engage or not. The second risk factor that most concerns me is that Massachusetts municipalities are very significantly insulated from liability for claims for making repairs or failing to make repairs to public ways. General Laws, Chapter 40, 84, provides a $5,000 cap, in fact, on all injury or damage resulting from a defect in a, in a public way. If the town were to engage in some way, shape, or form in repairs, upgrades, or maintenance to this particular roadway, we would not have the benefit of that statutory insulation, because this is a private way. It's not a, a public way that would fall within the parameters of Chapter 84. So I, with those particular caveats in mind, the first hurdle we have to get over is whether or not we can devote town resources, whether it be by staff or by funding, to the effort to resolve this problem. I, I would suggest that we could clearly argue there is some level of public convenience or public expediency involved here in terms of maintaining what is de facto a private way used by the public for travel purposes. Whether that, that interest rises to the level of the predominant or the dominant interest in, in taking this action is the question that any of us could offer an opinion on. I would suggest that perhaps gauging the level of interest by other interested stakeholders in, in undertaking action might be a, a preliminary step that the board could consider. The board could establish a, a meeting, a time to meet with abutters or other interested parties, not to just discuss the issue like we're doing tonight, but to basically lay the question down, what are you willing to do to resolve it? And we could take whatever information we, we gleaned from that particular type of a meeting, consider the likelihood of implementing a response that is going to be effective and meaningful in some way, and then determine what level of town input, i.e. what level of expenditure of public funds would be necessary to resolve the matter. I, I think that the level of risk in the town just spearheading the effort, so to speak, or offering consultancy, if you will, or maybe some services by public work staff or what have you, would not likely prompt any challenge to our, to our, to our efforts in, in, in terms of a 10 taxpayer lawsuit, but you never know.
Well, I, but the question I asked was just assessing the problem. That was the question I asked. Was can we, can we go out there as the town and, and ascertain what, what would solve the problem, and, and estimate what it would cost to do that, without more?
That would be an expenditure of, of public funds.
Yeah, could be.
But I would suggest, we could do it, sure. If, if we have, keep in mind too, Mike, it's, it's private property. We, we technically can't just go onto any private property and start performing invasive testing. We, we need some level of permission from the owner of the property. And it's going to be very difficult to ascertain that under these circumstances. very difficult to ascertain that under these circumstances.
Well, I'll assume that problem away. Let's assume that we can get permission to do that. Can you give me an assessment of what you think the risk is if we spend a few bucks to ascertain the problem and what will fix it and how much it might cost?
Technically speaking, any expenditure of public funds would fall within the constitutional limitations.
Okay. So let's, you know, I have much to say. I'm gonna wait a little bit here. I think that you're right, we should probably poll the folks, the abutters, the private property owners there, but I do think an argument can be made that, yes, this is a private road, but it's certainly used by the public quite, you know, a lot. You know, a lot. There are a lot of businesses in there that attract a lot of public interest, and there's a lot of traffic going through there. So if I'm a business owner there and, you know, I have a heart attack, do I expect an ambulance to get through that lake to pick me up? I mean, I think there's an element of safety here, I think, that, you know, or a fire engine or a fire truck? I mean, so you gotta think about what the public interest is or isn't. And is it our public interest to help folks that own property there? I mean, if they have a heart attack there versus at home, we're gonna pick them up at home. We can't pick them up there because we can't get through the lake. So, I mean, you know, and then, you know, at some point, you know, I went down there the other day, I mean, you know, I can't imagine what it's like in the summertime. It's disgusting. So, you know, I think really, we have a public interest here. I think we have a public interest that supersedes, you know, private interest, if you will, in terms of noxious, hazardous environment, a safety, and a safety issue. You can't get, you know, oftentimes in our select board meetings, we back into, well, it's safety, we can't get a fire truck down there, a police car down there. Well, you're not gonna get an ambulance through, I don't know, maybe you can, but it's gonna drown. It's deep. So, you know, I think there are other overarching issues here that I think, you know, if we're gonna be responsible, you know, fiduciaries here in the town, that we need to address. And I really, I really have respect, Mr. Schell, for like pressing the issue a bit, saying, well, you know, all right, but how are we gonna solve it? I mean, that's why I put it on the agenda, how are we gonna solve it? And if it take, you know, if we open ourselves up to a ten taxpayer, you know, lawsuit because we expended some money to fix the problem that we felt was a health hazard, then so be it. I'm not, okay, and then so be it. Okay. All right. Mr. Dubus, I see your hand up, and please come up.
Mr. Schell, could I say?
Yes, please. I just recognized you, sir. Yeah, yeah.
For those of you that don't know, I'm Bob Dubus. Most people do know me. Three generations have been in the business for what we're talking about. I have a, I'd like to have a little background on this development. We've, our company and a couple of other companies have been maintaining these roads the best we could. Unfortunately, they're over 40 years old. The structures were let go too long, and the sand that comes down those roads has infiltrated the stone and made it impervious. A lot of money was spent on the lake five to six years ago. They vacuumed everything out, they did the best they could. Some of the problem is that there's too much water and sand from the abutters. If you drive down, you'll see where a lot of, a lot that was developed, they didn't do any landscaping. So the sand is coming down off of the hills, going to the road, and then flooding into the basins. Now, unless you clean them every year, you can't stop that from infiltrating the stone. So you're beating a dead horse right now. My company was hired by a couple of people, and we went to the north and dug out the catch basins. There are a few more up there that need to be dug out, but you can't put the burden all on one person. So unless they get taken care of, it just puts more water and more sand into the basins that are cleaned and fills them up. So it's a perpetual thing. As you know, the town goes out every year, clean catch basins. That's what this needed. So one of the problems is that the road is old, and there are no heavy trucks that travel that road that I can see. Only about, I bet, three or four thousand times a year, the trucks that go over there are overweight. And if you know, when that was accepted, they only had a three-inch layer of asphalt, and they only used hardening underneath it, they didn't put any structure under it. So the road, believe it or not, has settled about two inches, which makes all the catch basins down the hill, they don't take any water anymore. So those structures are just sitting there doing nothing, and it all ends up in the bottom of the hill. So what needs to happen is, you need an extensive reconstruction of that road to make those basins work. And now the basins are old, a lot of them need to be replaced. So my thing is, even if you dug them out, they still don't work. When the sewer goes down there, and I'm assuming the sewer is gonna go around Commerce Park there at some point.
Yes.
Okay. When that happens, usually you put the sewer in, you tear the roads up, you replace the roads. At that point, there's a hundred or more owners, then divide up what it costs to put the structures in and put it on a betterment to their taxes for 20 years. That's the only way that I can see that we can justify putting the structures in as a town, because you're gonna be there anyway, putting sewer in, and if you put the sewer in, the roads go in. Because right now, if you were to go down there, you would have to do some very, very heavy disruption of the roads, disruption of people coming in and out of there, because from 137 on down, all of those structures take, do not take any water. You can see it yourself. Eric over there can justify that, he's seen it. And most people that drive in there see it. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that the puddle is there, which is now a lake, I shouldn't call it a puddle, I guess, anymore. And on the north side, the puddle is getting a little bigger, but like I said, we went in there and cleaned a few out. If a couple of other people wanted to chip in, I'm sure we could take a few more out of there, but that is passable, I think. But until you stop the sand from coming off the edges, that you're gonna always have that contamination. And for 40 years, I think it's done pretty well. There's a few people where the lake is that have spent a lot of money trying to fix, and they're just, they're just throwing money away. It needs to be redone, and you're looking, I can guess, $300,000 to do some work there. But my thing would be, the best time is when the sewer goes in, the roads go in, put the infrastructure in there, then it will be less money for the owners, and it will benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. Well said, well said. So I'm gonna turf it off to Dr. Bob Dunkinson. He has had a hint for a while. Bob, when are we gonna sewer Commerce Park? Any idea?
We're actually working on the plans for that phase right now. We actually started about a year ago for that, for Commerce Park, as well as a number of the other side streets off the Route 137 Meeting House corridor. So, yeah, it's not too far away, but it's, you know, it's not happening tomorrow, but it's not too far away. I just wanted to address two points that came up in the discussion, and one was raised by Attorney Costello and had to do with the issue of setting precedent. I, just so the board is aware, I am fully aware of at least one other private road in Chatham. One of the first projects I worked on when I was hired by the town. There is a private road that serves a private subdivision, one way in, one way out, which has a, has had and still has, a flooding issue because the original developer put the leach pits into bog material. And so they have never worked from day one, and that is an area where there is only one way in and one way out. So the access for fire and emergency vehicles, you know, can be a real issue. Where in Commerce Park, as I said at the very beginning, that's a circular roadway. So if you can't access it on Commerce Park South, you always can call around on the north side. And I've never seen the north side flooding to be so severe that you wouldn't have the same ability to get through that water, because as Mr. Dubus said, it, you know, it is flooding, but it is way shallower than on the south side. So I just wanted to bring those two things up. Thank you.
So Bob, within a year or two, or what are we talking here? Because I do think Mr. Dubus has articulated the, you know, I've thought about doing the work and doing a betterment as well. I think he just nailed it. He just nailed it. He understands it, and he nailed it. So I think, I think we take his advice under, you know, seriously. And we're doing a lot, we're doing a lot of sewer work down that area now. We're doing a ton of work down there.
Yeah, and we always, as we do the sewer projects, we look at drainage improvements. That's a standard, because we are generally ripping the road up from curb to curb, and it's the opportune time to address longstanding issues like that. We are probably a year to a year and a half away finalizing the designs for these areas, just because many of them involve pump stations, and we've learned recently that trying to site pump stations is a very difficult, time-consuming issue. You know, a lot of the ones we've done up till now have been on town property, but as we get into the more residential neighborhoods and even into Commerce Park, there is no town property, so we're looking at having to get easements and whatnot to site pump stations. And that is a very time-consuming and sometimes divisive issue in some neighborhoods, because, you know, the person who happens to be at the low point doesn't necessarily want the pump station in their yard. And so I say we're probably at least a year to a year and a half away from finalizing design, and then, you know, you're talking another two years for construction, so you're probably talking three to five years to get sewer in all these areas.
So I think that the issue of the pump station on the south side, I think you could probably find a, an abutter willing to give up a corner of their, his or her lot to put in a pump station. I would hazard a guess. I would hazard a guess. I would hazard a guess you'd find somebody willing to put in a pump station, just shooting from the hip, because it's such a problem.
Yeah, I will, I will tell you, for what it's worth, obviously, right where the water currently puddles the worst, that is the low point, and that is where we are looking potentially at citing a pump station. So obviously, when we do that, we would have, the town would have an interest in addressing the flooding issue, because obviously, we don't wanna be flooding out a pump station on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bob. Mr. Whately, please, Eric?
Thank you, Eric Whately. I'm a property owner in the park. So thank you very much for bringing this up. It's, as it's been said a couple of times, a very longstanding issue that everyone's been dealing with. Couple of really quick points. So you've already said it, but Bob really nailed it. I think that's a real opportunity for the town to participate and really probably find a solution that will get us there. The fact that that's four or five years out doesn't surprise me. I think an important point that was already made is, really, the people that are in the park all the time, so my guys and, you know, most of the people that work in there every day, don't go through the puddle. You're not allowed to go through the puddle. You'd be in big trouble if you went through the puddle if you're in one of our vehicles. Everyone knows how to navigate it. What the real impact is, is for people coming in that don't know, and in some ways are lacking some common sense if you see it. With some help from Dr. Dunkinson, you know, we've tried to dissuade people from going through there, but even then, we've still seen people going through there. We've put out some barriers to block a portion of the road. One of the issues is, one of the owners, one of the fish shipping companies that are in there, their tractor trailer still goes through there, and it needs to because of how it needs to approach its loading dock. So closing the road completely for them is not an option. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is that if we're, if this is four or five years out, if it's even possible to do what Bob Dubus mentioned, maybe there is something that in the best interest of the town and for the people that, for whatever reason, think they can make it through there, if the town could help with a way to further dissuade them, whether it's better signage, whether it's, you know, things that are on the road, maybe, you know, more, a more permanent way of blocking a portion of the road or something like that, maybe the short-term solution that gets us to that, you know, through the time to get to the end. So, yeah, thank you for bringing this to the forefront. I would also like to say, I don't, even as a property owner in there, I don't think the town should set the precedent of fixing the problem at the town's expense, because I think that would be an overall negative. The betterment concept really makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Eric. It does to me as well, as a private citizen and a select board member. Mr. Schell, I think you wanna say something?
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with that. I'm, I must say disturbed by the prospect, and I accept Mr. Dubus's assessment as being spot-on, even though I'm obviously not an expert in the area, but the idea of this being an ongoing thing for four or five years, even with some kind of signage that ameliorates the problem to some extent, or at least avoids having people damage their vehicles, I just wonder whether there's not some sort of a surface pumping arrangement that is an interim solution, and I'm just throwing, I'm just spitballing here, but I really think that, you know, it really is not acceptable to have that condition persist for three or four years.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Michael. Mr. Dubus again, and I don't know what kind of a pumping effort would be, but, you know, I'm sure it'll recur, I mean, it'll fill up again.
Bob Dubus again. Since you brought it up, Mr. Schell, I will tell you that Steve Daniel has put an elaborate pump system in his warehouse, okay? When it rains, it goes into a system, and then it's pumped out to a hole in the back of his, a low spot, I should say, it's not a hole, it's a low spot that's sanded, and it absorbs a lot of the water. Every heavy, heavy rain, he gets flooded out. And so far, he was doing pretty well until the four inches we had, and again, it flooded his warehouse out. So he is aware of that. He's asked me if there was another way to pump it and where to put it. I've researched it, and there is not. Unfortunately, that just happens to be a problem. And like I said, the way to correct it costs thousands of dollars to stop the water from coming down the hill, that's the main point, and stop the sand from coming off the edges. So unfortunately, it's a moot point, I'm sorry to say. But the northway is capable, if a stopgap measure, if you put in two more drainage pits, attach them to the two catch basins that are there, that could eliminate that puddle and make it passable at all times.
The northway?
Yes.
I've never experienced a northway puddle. No, I have, okay, all right, I've been down there all along. Okay, is there anybody else here physically that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please. Please identify us.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Cynthia Carey, and I didn't know anything about Commerce Park and the, you know, lake situation until a family member was visiting over the holidays and decided he wanted to go over to the Body Strong Gym, which he had been to before, so he had some sense of, you know, how to get there, but he encountered the water, and, you know, there wasn't obvious signage. He was in an SUV, and, you know, he's a guy, he figured, oh, he could just drive through it. And what happened was, of course, he got stuck, and later he described it as not just going through the water, but he felt... going through the water, but he felt like there was a ditch underneath, so it was very deceiving how deep the water was. So after it happened, you know, he had to wait for help to come, and so one of the local businesses offered for him to come in, which was very kind, and they said it happens all the time. And they described the water as being very dirty and he was advised, when he got home, to really scrub his legs because he was wearing shorts because he was going to the Body Strong. So anyways, the person described the water as being, you know, not just water, but also filled with fish scales, you know, blood and guts and gasoline and oil. And, you know, that was pretty disturbing. So I'm all in favor of more signage to warn people for sure. I went over afterwards because I had never been over to that area and I was frankly shocked by what I saw and I was really surprised when I saw the water. And one of my first concerns was, I know there are a lot of warehouses there and businesses, but it was also evident that there are people who live there. I don't know if they're apartments or houses, but it was obvious that a lot of people live there, and if there are people there, there could be pets and there also could be children. Maybe there aren't children living there currently, but there could be children at some point and also children, you know, visiting the area. And as you know, puddles can attract children. So I just worry about if it is a safety issue, you know, the water itself, you know, if the water should be tested and also to the environment, which I'm very concerned about. I don't know what happens to the water, I just know that potentially there could be an environmental hazard situation. I just want to, I just want to put it out there to the experts to find out if it could be causing, you know, some type of hazard in that way. There's also, of course, not only pets, but wildlife. So, you know, I'm all in favor of more signage, permanent signage, not just putting up whatever, you know, the barriers or little signs that say whatever it is, like no wake, but something permanent that people would be able to see so to prevent them from having the situation that my relative had. He had to put in a new engine, by the way, and, but, you know, that's not the problem. That's not the, the issue here. So my concern is for public safety. Again, I don't know if it, if it is a problem, but I just want to bring it to your attention. I appreciate your listening and I look forward to however the situation is resolved in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cynthia. Well said, well said. Anybody else here? Yes, indeed. Gloria, I see your hand up. You'll be next.
First of all, I would like to thank the select board for bringing this matter up. My name is Lisa Fortin and my family owns the business at 146 Commerce Park and also the, the building that houses Body Strong. And I do know that my brother Dan has been actively trying to pursue avenues of solving this issue because it, it's a problem for us and it's an even bigger problem for our tenant and the safety of the people that frequent the business. So we would welcome any type of work with the select board, any, you know, the signage. I think we could definitely help with something on that. We just want to make sure people are safe. I know the, recently, myself, I get up early and I went to work, I was up there probably about six o'clock in the morning on one of those really rainy days, and my brother came in about eight-thirty and he said, "How did you even get here?" And then about another hour later, my other brother came and he said, "How did you get here? I was driving my mother's little PT Cruiser." So needless to say, on the way out, I had to follow one of them through the puddle to even leave. So I do understand that it is a hazard. So I think, you know, we certainly as a family would like to work on solving the problem. So thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Nice to see you. Okay, Gloria Freeman, online.
Thank you. Yes, it's Gloria Freeman. I'm assuming you can hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I want to bring up an aspect of this issue which I haven't heard discussed. In the past, you have heard some of us express concern about Commerce Park as a potential source of contamination on Chatham's water quality and therefore on the health and safety of the town's water supply. As you know, Commerce Park is located in our Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So perhaps protection of our water quality could be the dominant motive that Town Council mentioned earlier. I know you are also aware that activities associated with commercial and industrial land use are often the greatest concern when evaluating water supply protection. We've been assured that businesses are aware of best management practices, but many of us have seen the giant puddles and streams and heard stories about their contaminated contents as well as improper disposal of hazardous materials. I suggest that our Board of Health provide more oversight to better protect our drinking water sources and conduct tests on storm runoff and the contents of the puddles and ponds at Commerce Park. By doing so, the Board of Health might be taking on the problem, but that's a good thing if our water quality is protected. Citizens and local officials should work together to safeguard public health and economic stability as well as to prevent contamination which causes costly water supply cleanup and remediation. Given time restrictions, I will not talk about the importance of acceptable drinking water to the future of the town, but you know it. One last thing, I believe I read in one of DEP's reports that funding and other resources might be available to us to address potential sources of contamination. Last thing, I heard from Elaine Gibbs that she is trying to speak and keeps getting bumped off or can't raise her hand, so maybe somebody at Channel 18 can help. Thank you very much.
Okay, Gloria, thank you. Then we have Stephen Daniel as well. Stephen, I see your hand up. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Eric and Bob alluded to, we've spent considerable time and effort and treasure in trying to sort through some of the issues over there, being in the butter at the bottom of the hill at 94 Commerce Park South. One of the challenges that Eric and I had probably six or seven years ago was we mobilized a crew, they have inland waters out of Rhode Island, we, we had a sketch of the underlying infrastructure plan of the area and hired this crew personally from Rhode Island to come over and try to clean everything out to the extent they could. I forget what the net expenditure was, it was seven, eight thousand bucks. And then we began the collaborative effort of soliciting owners on the south side of the park to see if we could get some of the, the money back that I had laid out. Eric may remember better than I, but I think we, there were roughly 70 to 80 property owners listed in the park. We reached out to as many of them as we could and I think we ended up getting funds back from eight or nine. I didn't break even, so that was kind of the last large-scale effort made, at least on my part, other than to protect the personal property. But I think the point is whether it's a betterment solution or whatnot, there's a lot of people, one might consider stakeholders in the park who, when it comes time to scratch a check to help craft a solution, are not stakeholders. They're tenants, they're people who may not necessarily have the means to contribute. I mean, we're looking for $500 a head and, as I said, had a real challenge in even getting that much from, from a dozen people. So something to consider as we think about the solution set going forward is how to, if not convince people, then compel people, perhaps the betterment program on, to participate in our solution set. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. And I, I'd be honest with you, I'm convinced of the long-term solution. I, I think we've heard it and expressed very clearly and very precisely, so I'm on board with the long-term solution. Short-term solution, not so much. Putting up signage to, to have folks not drive through there, I think is certainly something we got to do. I was up there the other day and there were a couple of orange cones and, you know, careful no wake sign and orange cones, but I'm still kind of scratching my head about a pumping event.
I spent a lot of money on that side.
I'm sorry?
I spent a lot of money on that side.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's funny. But I, I'm still not convinced with the, the lack of a pumping solution, even as an interim solution, why, you can pump out a, you know, septic tank, 1,500 gallons, 2,500 gallons, I don't know. I don't know how many, I'm sure there's a lot of gallons there and I know it's going to fill up again, but it's going to negate the, the noxious water there. I mean, I, I don't know. So I'd like, number one, I'd like, I'd like to remand it to Bob Dunkinson, please, and to accelerate the sewer-ing of Commerce Park with all due alacrity. We're working diligently in that area, coming down 137. Certainly have an interest in Meeting House Road, Middle Road's getting sewed, so, you know, let's, let's sewer Commerce Park as fast as we can and hopefully have consensus from these two board members and, and that feeling. I think the long-term solution has been laid out before us and I think it includes a betterment and I think it's, I think it's the right way to go. It is the way to go. Short-term, still scratching my head because I still think it's, it's, it's obnoxious and a nuisance and whether we need the cover of a, of a bylaw or ask the Board of Health to weigh in, to, to at least give an opinion as to what their solutions might or might not be, or, or have a bylaw on hand that says, you know, we can step in in these, these instances. I'm open to more suggestions, but again, the long-term, the long-term solution for me is laid out in front of us and I don't, I can't see why we can't pump that out, but I don't know. Somebody, somebody smarter than me tell me why we can't pump it. And I'm, and again, you've heard me say, I think I'm fairly willing to expend public funds to, to solve what I believe is a safety hazard and a, and a, and a public nuisance, to be honest with you. That's where I land with it, but I turned to Cory and I turned to Mike and Dreen's accused herself, but.
No, no, I mean, I mean, long-term, long-term solution completely fine. It's, it's the short-term is a lot more delicate of a conversation. Completely, if I read Pat correctly, or if I understand what Pat said earlier, is if we do expend public funds on this, we kind of lose that municipal insurance blanket of liability and stuff. So we got to be, keep that in the back of our mind is, but, I mean, we have a duty to these citizens. I think we have a philosophical desire to, to help this situation out and I support that. But it's a little thorny navigating some of this and we're going to need a little bit of guidance on it, so I'd like to keep the conversation moving forward. I mean, I know we got to pump it out. Didn't we buy a nice shiny new pump back a couple of years ago?
Oh, we did, yeah.
We could just test it, you know, just see if it works. I don't know.
Well, it could be a drill.
A drill, yeah, a drill.
We could have training.
Training, yeah.
I'm, I'm, that's tongue-in-cheek, but not really. Mr. Schell?
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I'll just say, I'm a big believer in one lawyer to a customer, but I, I also believe that this is a problem that we need to address somehow, in some way, that, that does not accept. And by the way, I, you know, in terms of the town doing anything to remediate, when you talk about what we heard from Mr. Dunkinson, that, that is clearly down the road. His solution is spot-on. I think we have to accept that. In the meantime, I, somehow or another, I would like to see people who are equipped to think about this and try to figure out what would be an interim stopgap that would, that would help to ameliorate the problem.
Thank you, Michael. I had a hand raised out here, it says guest.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Elaine, yep, Elaine.
Thank you, thank goodness. I'm getting a terrible thing with this computer. Thank you very much for addressing this. I can't believe the whole situation here in terms of that we don't on the road, but we really don't know who does. According to Mr. Daniel, there are 60, 70 to 80 property owners. So, I mean, if you take that number, if they were all, you know, encouraged strongly to reach in their pockets, they could pay to fix that out of their own pockets. That's, that's a lot of contributors in the short term. I don't think the taxpayers should be funding it. One of the things, I think Gloria touched on it, but this is our Water Resource Protection District. All nine of our wells are within 2,000 to 3,000 feet of, of this area. And in reading state and federal regulations, there are MEPA regulations, there are federal regulations on storm water and on drinking water protections. And I believe that regardless of the fact that they're private property, that we would have jurisdiction on a state or federal level and certainly municipal if we'd had regulations to make them comply with certain things. One would be that they can't have storm water, they can't have polluted water and, and other things that can, that can impact our drinking water. So I would recommend that we look into that. And I have looked at other towns who have Water Resource Protection Districts, and even though it's private property, if you live within it, they have regulations in place of what private owners can and cannot do in that area because it could contaminate drinking water. And I don't know why we don't have regulations and you could draft them tomorrow and put them in place. And we, we slap regulations on private property all the time moving forward and I would hope we would do that because we've got a drinking water problem and this isn't helping. So I think that is something you need to look into and I think that would be the remedy, that we have regulations that say those 80 owners have to take care of it and they have to clean it up. And long-term, maybe a betterment, but for now, I think that that would be the solution. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Elaine. I, I'm of a mind to, to ask the Board of Health to get involved, to take a look at the, to look at the, from a DE, from a water perspective, from a water resource perspective and DEP regs, et cetera, et cetera. I think we've, we'll certainly charge Jill and Bob with accelerating the, the sewer-ing plan for Commerce Park. And then I also would like DPW Department of Research what, what we could do in terms of a training exercise to pump that out in terms of whether it's the fire department or the DPW or whatever. I'm making it up as I go a bit, but I, I think, I think there's, there's an opportunity to at least provide some amelioration without, without getting too crazy with, with public money. So I'd like to explore, I'd like to explore all three avenues. But I see Dr. Dunkinson's hands up first and then Pat Costello. Dr. Dunkinson?
Yeah, you know, in, in terms of pumping it out, we do have the capability. We have our VAC truck that we have bought specifically for storm water management and sewer management. However, as, as Attorney Costello indicated at the beginning, we have to be very careful of precedent here. You know, we could pump it out, but then is the board suggesting that every time it rains and the system floods again, we get down and pump it out? And then what happens with all the other private roads in town that experience flooding? As I mentioned, there's one in Chatham that I am aware of because I worked on it when I first started 30-plus years ago. That road continues to flood to this day and is, it's in one way in and one way out. Is the expectation that if the resident calls up and says, "Come down and pump out my road", that we're going to do that? Because as you're well aware, when some of those storms that we had last fall and this early winter, you know, three, four inches of rain in, in four, five, six hours, we had flooding in town in places we've never seen before. And those kind of storms are going to continue. So, you know, we, there needs to be some level of expectation and frankly, some guidance for Town Council on what we should or should not be doing. In terms of a water quality issue, that's In terms of a water quality issue, that's, you know, that's a whole nother scenario here. As I indicated in my memo to the board, we've already internally looked at the testing issue. And the question is, what will we test for and what standards would we apply? That puddle is not a bathing beach. It's not a freshwater pond bathing beach. It's not drinking water. So, you know, what standards would we apply and what tests would we conduct? You know, as I indicated in my memo, all stormwater runoff on roads will have contaminants in it, from gasoline, from oil leaking from engines, from lead, from your brakes, and all those kinds of things. That is not at all uncommon. And, you know, there's been enough studies since the 1970s that have documented the contaminants in stormwater. And that occurs on every road in town. It is not unique to this particular site. You know, this particular site may have some other issues with it because of the nature of the land uses. You know, but I hate to put it this way, folks, but it is an industrial park that has been located in Chatham since the 1970s. And it has been within proximity to public water supply wells since the first day it was constructed. The closest water supply wells are the South Chatham Well Field with Wells 1, 2, and 3. And I'm happy to say that based on all the water quality reports since they began, we have not seen contaminants that exceed any of the federal or state drinking water standards. You know, if the drainage system in this park was working the way it should, all that runoff would be going down into the catch basins and into leach pits and back into the groundwater. So right now, the fact that it's ponding in the roadway, in my opinion, actually presents a slightly less environmental impact because it's not getting back into the groundwater. But, you know, all the drainage from every road in town ultimately gets into the groundwater and potentially impacts our drinking water supply. The only solution to that would be to put in tight tanks everywhere and pump them out after every rain event and take that water somewhere else. And, you know, let's face it, that's not going to happen. So I just want, I wanted to bring that up because, you know, we keep hearing about the testing and the impact on the groundwater. You know, as I said years ago, the best thing we can do for Commerce Park is sewer it. And that will eliminate a lot of the potential threat to our drinking water supply. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, thank you. Pat, you're on next. Pat Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, very briefly, this has been an interesting discussion, and what has certainly occurred to me over the course of the discussion is, we're looking at two types of remedial actions here by the town. Temporary or preventative, on the one hand, and then, you know, a permanent fix. The permanent fix, I would suggest, is not something we're going to be, you know, spending public funds on. That, to the tune of $300,000, $400,000, that's something that would be best addressed in the manner discussed by sewer-ing, reconstructing the road, installing drainage, and assessing betterments to the benefited parties, and that's down the road. I don't have any grave concern about taking interim measures such as installing signage or barriers or things of that nature that would help protect the traveling public and avoid the type of issues that have arisen. I think that would clearly fall within the police powers of the town and would be a permissible expense for a public purpose. Furthermore, to the extent that there are, if there are detrimental impacts from this particular flooding on our water supply, that opens a whole different regulatory scheme, as Ms. Gibbs had noted. I haven't heard anything to date that would indicate that there is any such risk, but that is something that the town could certainly look into as well. So I guess to get back to Select and Shell's point, what can we do right away? We could assist in detouring traffic or installing signage. To your point, Mr. Chair, if the town wanted to try to pump some of the water, to remove it temporarily, I would suggest that would be a public exigency that could be justified. However, as Dr. Dunkinson had noted, once we do it, that's sort of a task that the town has taken upon itself to perform. And the other thing with pumping water is, you know, discharging. I mean, we have, the water's got to be discharged somewhere. We have to make sure that we have a viable location for that so that we don't incur any liability or invite claims for discharging water onto other private property. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I see Dr. Dunkinson's hand is up again. Dr. Bob?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Pat said, if we were to pump water from there, we would discharge it at the wastewater treatment facility, which we've done in the past when we had to pump out town roads, if you will.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bob. Okay, any further, any further comments? Michael, Cory, summary comments? I'm, I'd like to know what it would cost the town to do a training exercise there, how much time and effort would be to pump it. And then, you know, and then I would suggest, and this is just trying to use common sense here, that, you know, you pump it out when it's impassable. It's impassable now. It's deep and impassable. It's a hazard. So I feel as though we're not doing what we should be doing as a town and not try to take care of it. That's overreaching or overarching, then so be it. But that's, and I can't, I mean, so I'd like to know how much it is going to cost and so the taxpayers are informed, and see what, you know, we can do a training exercise there to pump, to pump it out. We have, I think we do have the technology unless someone tells me otherwise. And then, long-term, I'm all in, long-term. I just think we reschedule, we schedule the water, the sewer system up there as fast as we can, and then we assess a betterment, and I think it's done. I think, I think we fixed it. You know, if it rains really hard, and it, I mean, you know, if it, if it gets so deep that you can't get a car or, you know, or an emergency vehicle through, are we going to pump it? I don't know. You can't, are you going to get emergency vehicles through there? Those are my, that's my pea brain. Anyway. Reactions. Cory?
Just to add to that, if we do explore pumping it, which I think we definitely have the equipment to do that, I recall that article.
Yeah, me too.
So the equipment is there.
It sure is.
We can do it physically. I think we should, I honestly, but I do think if we get the water down, we really need to have a conversation with the surrounding properties, because I don't think it's going to be just a nice, flat, paved area. There's, there's something down there.
Yeah.
It's chewed up pretty, pretty well. So, you know, how does that get addressed or patched by, in the short term? Because I don't see the town spending the money on that kind of work. But that's what's really chewing up all these cars and putting all the damage on it. So I think we got to tread cautiously a little bit, but we definitely have the capability to pump that sucker out.
Mike, any comments?
I'll just, I think, let's solve this in little pieces and not try to expand it to all the precedent and everything else. And I don't mean to suggest that in any way I'm minimizing the concerns that have been expressed either by Pat or by Bob Dunkinson, but if we can go in there and pump that out and it stays relatively passable for some period of time, that's a short-term positive result that I think we ought to just take. And if it turns out that it's filling up on a weekly basis, then we can address that problem when it arises. But for the moment, let's get the lake drained, the swamp drained, if you will, and we'll see where we are down the road if it persists. And if somebody comes and says, "Well, what about me?", then we'll figure out whether they're, they have a legitimate claim, or there's a distinction that's reasonable to draw and to say, "Sorry, but this was an immediate and serious public concern that doesn't apply to your circumstance."
Okay, good. Well said, and I'm in total agreement. So let's see what it costs to get a vacuator down there and pump it out, and we'll look at Jill and DPW. Look forward to getting that, and I think you've got, we've got a warm ear here to get it pumped out at least once here, and then we'll see what happens when it refills. I just think, you know, if it's impassable, it's time to pump. But anyway. Okay, thank you for the discussion. Thanks for your input. I appreciate it. I knew it was going to be a kind of a lengthy one, but we'll take that as, you know, as we can. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, we good? Thank you. Next up, and Shereen is going to return, we have 1610 Main Street, Mr. Metters.
And, Mr. Chair, as I had done last week, I will be recusing myself from the West Chatham Conversation on 1610 Main Street. 1610 and 0 Main Street, so I will recuse myself.
Okay, Mr. Metters, you'll be missed. Okay. Ms. Davis, welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turf this to Jill and with some background. I know we have Pat and Leah here this evening, and so Jill, take it away, and then we'll hear from Pat and Leah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet is a staff report that anticipating that the COA Board of Directors made a favorable recommendation to proceed with 1610. There's certain procedural matters that we could address which require town meeting action. So the first one is to place an article on the town meeting warrant. There's a draft, a very draft article that's included in the packet. And to fund that would require a ballot question, which is also provided in the packet on page one, and that would be for the funding question to go on the ballot that would follow town meeting action if there was favorable action. And then the third item is a requested zoning change. So with that action, we would require a referral back to, or I'm sorry, referral to the planning board for the zoning bylaw amendment, which is a map change, and for them to provide, the planning board to provide a report. So placement of the article and the referral, and then I could defer to the COA Board, a Director's Chair, to provide information on the board's vote.
Super. Thank you so much, Jill. And I will recognize Pat and Leah, if you'd like to speak, and we want to hear about the Council on Aging vote and the discussion, and look forward to hearing about it, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me, and I promise I will be brief. My name is Ted Burke. I am the chairperson of the Chatham Council on Aging Board of Directors, for those of you who don't know me, but I see the audience is getting slimmer. At our meeting yesterday, we had a robust discussion regarding 1610 Main Street, how we felt and what we thought we should do. And we were able to come up with two motions, and I will read them to you, and hopefully this will get this project moving. Upon motion duly seconded, the COA Board of Directors unanimously approved the following motion. The COA Board of Directors supports and recommends the design and construction of a new COA facility slash Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street in West Chatham as it was presented in town meeting in 2021 in Article 15 of the town warrant, but with the modification that an existing program area will be repurposed for an adult daycare center and that the article will include an updated cost estimate. We also made a motion that was duly seconded and unanimously agreed to, to discontinue further consideration of the old Commerce Road Site/Markoni Scheme 3 as a location for the new Center for Active Living. So we're on board 100%, and we hope you all are too.
Thank you, Pat. Thanks. That was a resounding vote. Reaction from the Select Board?
Shereen, please. Yeah, I, again, I'm just going to reiterate that I've been in favor of this site all along, and I'm really happy to be able to bring this forward if we want to make a motion now, or whether you want to hear from the people that you had, you said that you were going to open it up.
Yeah, no, please, you can make a motion, yeah.
Okay.
And then we can second, then we can have discussion.
Okay. So the motion would be to, I guess this is multitude, right? Or receive, let me see.
There are three.
Okay, I'm just going to say that we move to place the reference draft articles on the annual town meeting for May 6, 2023, and the ballot question for the annual town election on May 11, 2023.
Jill?
And further, to make the referral to the planning board for the zoning bylaw amendment.
So noted with what Jill had mentioned.
I'll second that. Just question, there was, the last time, there was a reference to the planning board for the zoning bylaw amendment?
There was. Their recommendation was not printed in the warrant, but it was provided at town meeting.
Okay. So I'll second it.
Please.
Well, I don't want to confuse the issue, but I am, as you well know, I am extremely, I'm thrilled with this. I think it's a great opportunity for Chatham. I think we're lucky to have a second chance at this. I think the reasons to do this are legion, and I think we can, to the extent, we should have a full discussion of it, but I think that the concerns that have been expressed in conversation this time around, as well as some of the ones that we heard about the last time, are worthy of discussion, but they can all be answered. I do, however, and I want to do this in a procedurally appropriate way, but I'm hopeful that when we leave here tonight, that we can also have agreed to put on the warrant a companion article that dedicates the old COA, the 193 property, to conversion to, I'll say, affordable, attainable workforce housing, and the appropriate companion rezoning for that as well. But as far as this is concerned, I'm delighted to be very supportive.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shell. Joanie Craig had her hand up out here, and then I'll be looking online as well. Welcome, Joanie.
Thank you, Joanie Craig, West Chatham. And initially, I spoke against this article on town meeting for a number of reasons that we won't go into. Since that time, I've been very impressed with the COA and others that have really come to the forefront to really let us know what is going on, what they do. So the PR has been excellent. I commend you. And I am in favor of this. I don't want to put a damper on it, and I know it's still early. I am a little concerned about the initial proposal by the COA because I remember seeing the schematic, and I'm hoping that we will take into consideration with regards to the exit from the building once it is put up. I have a real concern that some of our elderly individuals drive a lot slower than some others, and I also have a concern that individuals who come around the Barn Hill Rotary, after they go around it, they speed up. So I would really like to suggest that we have a right turn only exiting the property, and not just a sign for that, but also have it in such a way where probably the frontage has to be changed so that maybe it's an enter-only one-way and an exit-only, a curb-type of thing. So if you would keep that in mind, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable knowing that some of our elderly aren't quite as alert when they're leaving properties like this. Okay, thank you.
Joanie, you're wearing your Traffic Safety Committee hat, I can tell, but that's never, never too far away. Any other comments online? I see Guest, hand raised. Guest?
Yes, it's Elaine Guest.
Elaine, yep.
Yeah, I had one question. I don't know if Mr. Costello is still here. I had asked it last time, and it wasn't answered. In the legacy agreement, it said, "As the needs of the town evolve, the property may thereafter be used for municipal purposes." So my question was, if it's determined in 10 years that it's no longer needed and there is a desire to use it for another municipal purpose, is that a decision that would be made by the Board of Selectmen, or would it have to go back to town meeting so that the town could decide what that other municipal purpose would be?
Yeah, and he's not on, Elaine, so we'll make sure he gets that question, okay?
Okay. And the second one is, under the agreement, the right to terminate. It says the donor has the right to terminate the agreement if 5A and B are not passed. And my question was, why, what happens if he doesn't terminate the agreement? Is it still... Is it still out there? So, those are the two questions I have.
Yeah, and that language is similar to the last time, I don't believe that language has changed at all, so, okay, so we can.
I asked it last time, and so I'm just curious what those mean. Rather than saying that it is terminated, it says he has the right to terminate it, and if he doesn't terminate it, I'd like to know what the implications of that are.
Okay, all right, thanks Elaine.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks Elaine, okay. So, anybody else? Yes, Pat, and then.
Thank you, Jeff. Just very quickly, we did discuss the affordable housing at our board meeting, and although we don't own the building and we don't own the land, the Town of Chatham does, our board is 100% behind utilization of that site for affordable, attainable, or workforce housing, as Mike puts it, and we think it would fill a great need, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Pat, and I will stand in for Select Board member Nocastro, that I would announce, and I'm doing that, that he's fully supportive of the recommendations from the COA Board and a moving ahead with the project at 1610 Main Street, including a referral to the planning board of the zoning article and placement of a ballot question, so Dean is in favor of all three, he's not here to vote, but he's in favor of all three. Mike, I totally am in agreement with your probably suggested motion concerning affordable, attainable workforce housing at that site. I prefer we wait till Mr. Nocastro is back as a member of this board, if that's okay. I know exactly what your sentiment is, we won't lose track, but I think he would like to weigh in on that as well, and I think he'd be very positive. I'll speak for him.
I'm going to accept that. I'd like an understanding that it will be on the agenda the first meeting that he's back, I know you're not here, next week, so two weeks hence.
Week after.
And I do want to say that I have had conversations with people in the community, as I'm sure we all have, on various aspects of this, so I don't want to suggest that, you know, this is particularly unique, but there are people in the community who are very enthusiastic about this, but who feel that it is extremely important that we marry the two of them together, in the sense that they be a package, that that will enhance the community's response and interest in supporting it, and then, of course, there's the simple proposition that it is perhaps, I think, very likely, the fastest route to having affordable, attainable workforce housing that somebody could move into here in Chatham. So, I think that's an independent reason for it. So, with that, those comments, I'll accept your proposition.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shell, and you know I'm in total agreement, and we will get on the agenda, not next week, but the week after, okay?
I'm in total agreement, too. I think timing is everything.
Yep, timing is critical, okay. So, we've had a motion and a second, we've had discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, okay. We'll take a vote on the motion. Mr. Shell.
Surprise, surprise, aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And surprise, surprise, the chair says aye as well. I thank you very much for your time and effort, Council on Aging, and Leah, and everybody that's been involved, thank you so much. Okay. In the interest of time here, I'm actually going to try to shorten the meeting a bit, believe it or not. Next up, and I know, Alex, you've been online all night, and I'm not going to waste your time, but perhaps we can take those capital plan and articles to our Thursday night discussion, rather than this evening, that's, we have three more budget reviews here, general government, community development, and public safety. If we could get through those with some alacrity, maybe we could put the capital plan and the articles discussion to Thursday night, if that's okay? Is that not okay?
Mr. Chair, if there's any questions, though, on the capital stabilization fund, it's more of a funding arm, Alex is not going to be with us on Thursday night, so if we can get to that today.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, okay. Alex, it's all yours, take it away.
Ben Nook, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, I will try to be very succinct here in going through budgets, I know that you just said, we'll try and get through these as quickly as possible. In your packet, I provided the general government, which is including an increase of 8.77%. I mean, we've talked about some of these items before, that there are increased staffing for the HR, Human Resources Department Division, so that is one of those increases. And I think also, the legal budget is staying the same, audit budget is going up a little bit, we've talked about that, I think, prior, for some of the items, such as the fixed assets, the Eldridge Public Library audit going up slightly, and assessing treasurer collectors staying the same, there's additional funding for information technologies, $12,500 in their software maintenance contracts, which covers the entire town. The town clerk is requesting a part-time employee to help with the expanded voting. We talked about that when we first presented the budget, as far as the additional staffing requests being made. Elections is going down due to the number of elections next year, and the sticker office is an increase of $10,000, mostly for supplies. So, quickly in a nutshell, that's general government operating budgets, and I'll just stop right now, I'm going through it rather quickly, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Stupid question, stickers are that much?
We went to the online sticker system, and we found that we were printing quite a few more, so while we are, you know, it's a great online system for the public to get their online stickers and not have to wait in line, and we're promoting it even more, but the stickers, we had to reprint a number last year, so we've just signed that this year, we're hoping to contain costs, and we're hoping that the staffing costs are going down, because it's not as much manpower as we've had previously.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Community services, community development.
Community services, again, comprised of the Council on Aging, Recreation Beaches, Lighthouse Beach, Veterans Benefits, Human Services, the libraries, public ceremonies, and a couple smaller ones. So, the Council on Aging, again, provides for 50% of the Director of Community Services salary, and that's changed from previous years, because we had, as you know, with the administrative order last year, we've sort of put that into the Community Services department. So, we have a 50% split between the Council on Aging budget and the Recreation and Beaches budget for Leah's salary, so that's changed there. Also, the Select Board endorsed the Licensed Social Worker for Seniors, as well as for youth, so we have two full F-time Es in both of those, in the Council on Aging Division, as well as Recreation Beaches, so that increases those costs. Veteran Services is staying pretty much level, we get an assessment from the Town of Barnstable to cover the Veteran Services, I'm sorry, from the county, and then we have the benefit payments to the Chatham veterans. And Human Services is staying pretty much level funded, except for a $1,000 increase to the Cultural Council for FY 2024. Libraries is requesting, Eldridge Public Library and South Chatham Library are both requesting increases for next year. Eldridge Public Library, a 4.5% increase, and the South Chatham Public Library is requesting a $2,500 increase, which placed to 33%. And again, I'm moving quickly through this, the other items are level funded, and that's for the public ceremonies, the Chatham Band, and the railroad music. So, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Corey, and then I've got one.
Just a minor one, back up to the Cultural Council, was a $1,000 increase this year?
Yes.
And was that lower than what the committee had requested? I can't recall the memo off the top of my head.
No, they requested a $1,000 increase, and that's what's being proposed.
All right, good, thank you.
And then the Eldridge Library renovations, the improvements, separate capital item?
That is a capital item that will be discussed on Thursday, at Thursday's meeting, because that is originally proposed at just around a million, but now it's looking like it's going to be more than about $2 million.
Goodness, okay, can't wait for Thursday night, okay? Mr. Shell, sorry.
Couple of questions, just help me get sort of accustomed to these presentations. The last sentence of the Community Service introductory paragraph says, "The budget is presented at 1475378, 2.2 increase over fiscal year 2022." If I look at page 295, where that appears, and I appreciate the numbers change, but that is showing a larger number and a drop of 73,000, and it appears to me that the comparison there is to fiscal year 2023. Can you just help me reconcile those numbers?
Well, yes, I think the increase over FY 2022 is a typo, it should say FY 2023. The department budget, I'll have to go to my budget book right now and look, because as you know, with the online budget book, we are updating all the time, so we do have the online budget book.
Well, that's fine, if you tell me it's going to, if I went into it online, it's going to say the same thing, that answers my question.
Yeah, you'd have to look online from what was presented originally.
Yeah, okay.
Because as we move through these, they do change.
Okay, and then the only other question I have is the, if I go back to the presentation in the back, for Recreation and Beaches, it appears to me that there's a 17.5% jump from 23 to 24, and I just wondered, I mean, that's a pretty, it's, it's over $100,000, closer to 150,000, and I just wondered what's in that, or why it's such a large increase.
And that is due to, I believe, and I'm looking at it right now online, so I'm showing a 15.2% increase over the prior year in the current budget book, and I believe the sum of that was due to wages, so again, the new social worker for youth, so that added quite a bit to the Recreation and Beaches.
Okay, that's in Recreation and Beaches?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sold, done.
There are two positions, one under Council on Aging and one under Recreation.
Thank you, that explains it.
So, moving forward again, the capital budget, which I think you'll, these are items that are included in the capital budget plan, so not for discussion, really, our focus on Thursday night, again, general government, consulting and engineering, general government, Channel 18 equipment, the land management GIS, and software upgrades, as well as technology. So, fairly standard annual things that you see every year. The IT department is requesting 150,000 for an upgrade to the video surveillance system at the water pollution control facility, and then Community Services, particularly at the Recreation Community Center, replacement of fitness equipment. So, those are all just more or less annual capital items that are requested in the capital budget.
So, is the IT department for a buck fifty, is that in the capital budget, or is that in the upper, that's in the capital budget this year?
It is in the capital budget, yes.
But it's not a separate article, it's not going to be a separate?
Not a separate article.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Just, if I may, another educational question for me, and it's how you account for these, these are capitalized and then amortized over useful life, is that how they get treated?
These are, well, we do amortize, because we do have to have our fixed asset accounting that will depreciate these over years. Consultant in Engineering is one of those items that we've always funded in the capital budget, it's not really a capital item, but it will go to support capital projects, so that's why it's in the capital. Channel 18 equipment, we don't know what we need from year to year, so it's always been included in there, as well as the other items.
So, is that like an intangible that gets amortized over a period of time?
I think it gets expensed.
Or is it expensed year one?
It's expensed in, yeah, it's expensed on a cash basis, however, as I mentioned, with our fixed asset accounting, if we do purchase a large piece of equipment, we do amortize it over the life of the useful life of the equipment, and that's reported on our fixed asset accounting.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes software, right? I mean, you capitalize software as well, or you don't?
It's, yeah, it's, we really don't capitalize software, because it's more or less an annual subscription.
Or something like the $150,000 upgrade to a video surveillance system, I would assume you capitalize that, but.
That will be capitalized, yes.
So, something like that is more just a matter of presentation? Would I, is that a correct understanding of why it's in the capital budget?
It's in the capital budget, because we have to purchase the equipment, and we will depreciate that probably over, you know, seven years.
Okay.
The other item that, with some of these smaller capital, or the consulting and engineering, is we have an appropriation every year for some of those that we allow to build up, so that two years from now, if there was an expenditure, we could fund the whole thing, and the consulting and engineering does carry over if it's not expended, or all of them on the capital plan carry over if they're not expended until the next.
So, it's more in the nature of a reserve?
For the consulting and engineering, it would be, but for the software and the IT stuff, sometimes it takes a couple of years to build up to do like the full replacement, so I'm not sure what that accounting term is, that's an Alex question, but we allow it to encumber, so we can push it forward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions on Community Services? Okay, Alex, Community Development.
Community Development is requesting one increase, a major increase for professional and, I'm sorry, professional purchases services, and that is to provide support for some of the community housing initiatives, so we're looking at an increase of about 6.53 over the current fiscal year budget. As I said, again, the purchase of services, $25,000, as support for some of the community housing initiatives, we are trying to develop some of these parcels, as well as some of the support for the historical commission. So, that's the major increase in that budget for Community Development, and then the Economic Development Department, or Chamber of Commerce, is requesting an increase of $11,000, to go up from $89,000 to $100,000, which they've requested a couple of times in the past several years, but we're bringing it forward this year. And there's no capital request, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and I think Katie is still in the audience, if you have any questions on the purchase of services, increase in her division.
Any questions, comments? Comments? Corey, no, okay, anybody?
I'm going to get in trouble for saying this one, but I know, and I have no problems, you know, supporting the chamber requests, but if anyone spent any time around town this summer, people know Chatham is a destination, they clearly know we're here. We just got to keep supporting that and figuring out how to balance our destination location with all our expenditures and operations, but we're definitely on the map, in a good way.
Okay, we'll move on here. Public safety.
Public safety.
Yep.
Okay, public safety. So, moving on to public safety, which the majority, the larger divisions in here are the police and fire, and so the police budget is being requested at, well, increasing by $132,354 to just over $3.3 million, and the majority of that is to fund the wages and uniforms and training, and also the inclusion, which was endorsed by the Board for four new community service officers, and those will be part-time officers or part-time civilians to assist with some of the downtown summer traffic that we have. They're also requesting, let's see, so that is, looking at this, so the total for the public safety altogether is 7.8 million, as I said. So, police in their capitals requesting 215,000, and that's for their annual cruiser replacement, which we have every year, as well as another vehicle, the special operations vehicle, and then $45,000 to upgrade their video recording system at the police department. So, I'll stop there for police.
I have a question on what is a special operations vehicle? I know what a cruiser is.
That would be what, it's usually an SUV, so a tactical vehicle, it would, it's not a March, I'm not sure if this is a March Cruiser or not, I have to go back and look at my. at my notes, but it is an SUV rather than just a regular cruiser.
All right, Chief Anderson's here and he can answer the question. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will defer to Lieutenant Andy Goddard. He is in charge of our fleet operations and he can answer that question.
Thank you.
So a special operations vehicle is simply for us a pickup truck. It's not a regular cruiser, so it doesn't transport prisoners or anything like that. However, the purpose of it is to carry heavy cargo, large cargo, mostly traffic control devices, barricades, cones, barrels, all that kind of stuff, plus anything else that we might need to carry, recovered property, bicycles, lawn mowers, whatever it is, things that wouldn't be able to be carried by a standard cruiser. The other thing it's used for is for anything that's required, heavy duty work, like towing heavy trailers. We have some trailers that we need to tow with that type of thing, using it off-road. The cruisers, even though they're all-wheel drive, their weakness is they're lower to the ground, so a truck is required for higher, higher ground clearance. So if we have to go down like to the Stage Harbor Lighthouse or up into the woods, that kind of thing, we would need that type of vehicle.
So is the 215,000 broken out between the cruiser and the special ops vehicle?
The special ops vehicle, I think, was budgeted for 70,000.
And the cruiser is the balance?
The two cruisers, I think, are budgeted for 100.
Oh, two cruisers, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, there are two cruisers, okay.
And that special operations vehicle would be replacing a current one that we have that is very old. It's.
Was purchased in 2009.
Okay.
And we're looking for a similar life cycle on the vehicle that would be replacing that one. The vehicle's not used on regular patrol, so we're estimating a good 10, 12 years of usage out of this particular vehicle, this replacement vehicle.
Got it, thank you guys, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Alex, animal control?
Okay, thank you. Yep, the animal control budget is just increasing due to contractual wages as well as a small increase for the operational supplies. So again, it's going to buy just over 7,000 for FY 2024.
Okay, fire?
And then fire is requesting an increase of just over 4%, and most of that is due to staffing as well as some small increases for the expenditure line items based on inflation. And if you, there's no question on the fire operating, I'll move to the fire capital request. So again, the 515,000, the majority of which is for a new ambulance, 355,000, and the replacement for the 2013 administrative vehicle. And then again, the other items are for annual radio replacement equipment, the self-contained breathing apparatus, and then the turnout gear for the firefighters.
Super Alex, I see Chief Tobano's here. Wanted to come up for one second, Chief. I've got one question, and perhaps others have questions as well, but.
Good evening, Justin Tobano, Fire Chief.
Hey, Justin, welcome. Listen, this is one of the first years that I've been sitting here and not seeing an ask for an increase in fire staffing, so staffing's okay?
Staffing's great, yeah. The, you know, we were really fortunate that, well, I guess the majority of this board supported adding additional staff in FY 22 and FY 23. That staffing has been instrumental in our ability to staff calls. For the last two calendar years, we've set records in our total call volume and our total ambulance transports. So in 2021, we set a new record, and 2022, we set a new record.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know you've been very, very busy. I understand overtime's usually been the bellwether there. You, we come in, you say the overtime's out of control, we need more staffing. So I guess that, I guess that's worked, and it also sounds as though you've been successful recruiting, and I think that's, I think that's great, so, okay, kudos, good job, you guys. Good job, thank you. That's all the questions I had for Chief. Anybody else? Okay. And then, you know, one of the vehicles is, you know, nine years old, and ambulances are extremely expensive. Okay. Okay, on to the EMS.
Again, these are level funded for next year, so I think in your packet, we've said that they're level funded. And again, if there's any questions, I think Chief Justin is happy to answer them, or Chief Mike.
I had a question on generators. Can we buy generators with ARPA funds?
I believe that would be an acceptable expense for ARPA funds, especially since we have the revenue replacements. So I think that's something that the board will look at on Thursday when you look at what we're looking for for FY 2014, but ARPA funds are available right now, 2014, 2024.
Yeah.
But ARPA funds are available right now, so if generators are needed right now, we will look at that.
Good. And ARPA funds are gonna help our capital budget, okay. All righty. Capital plan.
Okay.
The one I wanted to nuke, here we go.
Yes, so, yeah, thank you for bearing with me as I move through that rather quickly. So this is an article that we first proposed back a couple of years ago, and it's regarding the wastewater capital stabilization fund. As you might recall, we received 2.265 million from the town of Harwich when they first came on and joined Chatham's wastewater treatment plant. So to take their, have them come on, we have milestone payments. So the first one was received in July 2017. We've just received another 1.5 million in January, and there'll be two more payments of 1.5 million prior to June 2026. So those funds, per the Department of Revenue, close to free cash when we receive them. We've been carrying them in free cash ever since. What we'd like to do, and what we're proposing, is to create a wastewater capital stabilization fund, to use those funds and all the milestone payments received from Harwich for wastewater, for wastewater purposes. We have quite a bit of expenses for wastewater, which don't qualify for the 0% loans through the Clean Water Trust. So we're borrowing those, especially for the design and engineering, at higher rates, especially as interest rates go up. And this would also give us a way to fund some of these items without borrowing in the future. So we're proposing this article, again, to town meeting, to create a wastewater capital stabilization fund, and to transfer the 2.265 million from free cash into that stabilization fund, and also have that, any future payments go into the stabilization fund. So I'm, you know, I provided a draft warrant article in the packet as well as the financial policies that do say that one-time revenue, which these are considered, can be directed towards either debt service, a stabilization fund, the OPEB trust fund, or the capital budget. And I think, you know, the recommendation is since the source of these funds are from the wastewater, it should go back to fund wastewater projects.
Okay, Alex, thank you. Yep, yep. So just a couple of comments. There is a logic to your, your recommendation. I believe the warrant article that was defeated was more generic language, and we, we mentioned a capital stabilization fund. I think, was that correct? So I think, you know, it took me a few years to get here, but I think this is an appropriate use of these funds to create a wastewater stabilization fund. I think there's some logic there. We're certainly gonna be, we're certainly gonna spend the money. We know what we've got coming, so I think I would be in favor of this and would be in favor of the article as well, and I'll certainly listen to my fellow select board members as well. Ms. Davis?
I totally agree with you. I, you know, I think the wastewater funding that we've been receiving isn't gonna last forever, right? I don't think that that's gonna happen. So I think this is a good place to put this money. And we, as you said, we have a lot of, this is gonna be one of our greater expenditures going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I don't know whether Alex or Jill or anybody at the table is the right addressee, but just ballpark, what do we think we'll be spending on wastewater capital expenditures over the next five years?
We have quite a few, you know, with the expansion, expansion of the wastewater and the continuation, and I see Dr. Bob coming on with what we're going to expend. But as I said, design and engineering costs do not qualify for the 0% interest loans. So I think that's one of the reasons why we want to do this, but I'll let Dr. Bob speak.
Dr. Bob?
Yes, thank you. DEP had a survey that they sent out last fall asking all the towns to estimate their wastewater needs for the next five years, and working with our engineers, we estimated somewhere between 20 and 25 million over the next five years in wastewater projects.
And, and how much of that would not qualify for the 0% interest loans?
None of the, none of the engineering is reimbursable under the SRF, so none of the engineering, so probably three to four million at least.
Okay. Yeah, I, this seems perfectly logical to me, and I, I think it also makes sense in terms of, I mean, there's the logic of paying for what it is that we're buying in the way of capital projects. I, I think it's also useful to get it out of free cash, to be very honest, so I, I would be very strongly in favor of this.
Thank you, Mike and Corey.
I have no issue with moving, you know, taking this approach. We've kicked this around and talked for quite some years. I mean, we've got, we just recently got the second payment, and we've got several payments coming down the line. So it's a balance of, you know, it's where the money came from, we should make sure the money goes back to it. As Dr. Dawkinson has mentioned, we have a significant amount of money, 20-plus thousand, 25 million, you know, so this would definitely help out that scenario, so I have no objection.
Okay, how about a motion?
I'll have a shot at it here. I'm looking, so I move that we place an article to create a wastewater capital stabilization fund pursuant to general law, Chapter 40, Section 5, to be utilized for capital expenses for the wastewater management program, which transfers 2,265,000 from free cash to said wastewater capital stabilization fund, and directs future milestone payments and/or project share costs to the fund. And moreover, that we.
We'll take them separately.
We want it separate, okay.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Okay, Mike. The chair says aye as well, Michael.
I, I, I move that we recommend the wastewater capitalization, capital stabilization fund article.
Second.
Good, okay, Corey?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well, it's four zip, four zip and Dean's not here.
Can I just ask a quick question? Maybe I'm just quickly reading this. Are we counting for the, the second payment? Or am I, I'm sorry to, sorry to ask this question, but.
Yep.
It's actually a good point.
Lucy, we have the 2.265, which we, which we just made a motion to expand. We have additional payments, but I just wanna make sure we're covering the payment that we just got on the 18th.
Yes, I spoke to our auditors, and they said that, yes, that was their recommendation to craft the article this way, and then if it did not pass, then everything would just stay with free cash, but if it does pass, then we've already put those funds into a high-interest account right now.
Okay.
Until town meeting, so.
Okay, just wanna, just wanna leave a million and a half dollars.
So to be, to be clear with respect to Corey's question, the, the subsequent payment is covered by the directs future milestone payments language?
Yes.
Okay.
They haven't closed out to free cash yet, but they.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure.
Good point, Corey, thank you. Okay, we took a vote, here we go. Thank you very much. We took a vote on the recommendation? Did we, did we vote on the recommendation? Okay, good. All right, thank you. Yeah, I thought we did too. Okay, next up, thank you very much for that, folks. Okay, next up, community review follow-up, determine the oversight of the trap dock operation, natural resources staff. I see the harbor master is here, and I don't know if Bob's gonna speak to this as well. The memo is from Bob with a copy to Stuart and Ted. It just has a reaction, I'm not sure what, what this says. So anyway, Bob, take it away.
Yeah, this is, this was at the request of the board. You asked us to look at the issue of oversight of the trap dock facility because of the increased use there. And honestly, we also lumped in 90 Bridge Street as well because that's a very similar facility and is seeing increasing use and will see further increasing use. So just so everybody's clear, they, those, both of those facilities are currently covered under a set of regulations, our regulations for town landings, landing places, and other town-owned water-dependent properties. However, they, they're, those are relatively generic regulations that cover, you know, multiple waterfront properties in the community. And so we suggested that specifically trap dock, but also 90 Bridge Street, required some more specific regulations, if you will, mainly because of their commercial fishing industry activities. So we thought the best, most expedient way to do so, rather than changing the waterways bylaw, which, as you know, just went under a fairly lengthy and extensive renovation, was to do it within the consolidated waterway regulations. So the harbor master drafted up some revised language, which was in your packet. We discussed that at the staff level, and then last Thursday, the waterways advisory committee started a discussion of it because they will need to hold a public hearing on it once they finish their review. So anyway, we've got a couple of sections where we made some changes. We did increase some fees or add some fees relative to use of the trap dock and 90 Bridge Street. And then in Section 1026 of the regulations, which is on page 26, we put in some regulations regarding, specifics regarding usage. So tonight, it's really just for your information, the waterways advisory committee is gonna be reviewing this again at their meeting on February 16th. And then we hope at that meeting, they will set a date to take this to a public hearing or further review by members of the public and comment, and any comment from the board, if you have, don't have any comments tonight, but you do have comments after you think about it some more. Similarly, or in addition to, we are not recommending any direct oversight of the fish pier. As you know, at the, sorry, at the fish pier, we have a wharfenger basically during the active fishing season, somebody who staffs the fish pier on a daily basis to oversee the operations, both of the fishing community, the leaseholders for the packing house, dealing with members of the public, the pedestrians, the vehicles, and whatnot. At this point in time, we are not recommending a similar position for the trap dock because of the fact that, A, it's not as heavily used, we don't have the pedestrian tourist factor at the trap dock that we do at the fish pier, and the fact that it's immediately adjacent to the harbor master office where there is staff there every day, if you will. In addition, we have a camera that oversees the trap dock. We will be putting another camera in the new building, which I'm happy to say probably started construction today, finally, after a couple of fits and starts, getting that underway. So we didn't feel the need for a full-time presence, an additional full-time presence, if you will, at the trap dock and/or 90 Bridge Street. Now, you know, that may change as the future goes on, and we see further increased usage at trap dock, and then once the upweller is installed at 90 Bridge Street, if we see increased uses there, you know, there may be a need for a position that could float between kind of both of those areas to provide the necessary oversight. But we didn't see the need for that at this point in time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and as you indicated, the harbor master is also present to weigh in as well as necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Comments from the select board? Shereen, Davis?
Yeah, I had requested this agenda item, and it was in the context of, originally in the context of our discussions back in the fall about committee oversight at first, when we were talking about, when we were doing our committee review. And it became clear to me, and I, you know, that we don't really have enough, we have Antley's Cove overseeing, obviously, Antley's Cove Committee overseeing Antley's Cove Committee, but as far as our landings and, and the trap dock and, and obviously others like Barn Hill and Ryder's Cove and 90 Bridge Street, whatever, there's no real committee that's overseeing that formally. We often refer back to waterways as a default committee to overlook that. Waterways by definition is a waterways committee, and there may be overlap in usage because the docks go up to the water, but, you know, that was part of the discussion that began But, you know, that was part of the discussion that began this conversation. The other piece was as we were looking towards, you know, stuff with the cowyard and some other things that were coming up. It wasn't clear where the Trap Dock landed in sort of staff oversight. Not staffing, management staffing, but within the division. Like, who, you know, we know that the coastal resource director sort of oversees the landings, and we know that the harbor master and the wharfenger oversee the Aunt Lydia's Cove. But the Trap Dock really didn't have that designation. More, is it more like Riders Cove, or is it more like, you know, Aunt Lydia's Cove? So there's where my questions were lying. So when we got, when we got the, the overview from the staff, I was a little, you know, I, I was a little like, wow, we're getting regulations, and we're getting referred, these regulations referred to waterways. And I thought that we were maybe getting a little over our skis. And I thought that the recommendations might come up through the ranks to the town manager to give us a little more feedback on this as well. Maybe I didn't articulate it clear enough in my request. I really didn't get, I didn't request any opportunity to follow up with anybody. I've had a couple of casual conversations, so, you know, I'll, I'll take responsibility for not being that clear on this. But I, I really, really feel that we, we're, we're working in silos oftentimes when it comes to the landings. This is how I feel. And when you've got all these, you know, conflicts of use that we've seen happening in, you know, with the cowyard and some other potential areas, I just thought that maybe we shouldn't be doing silos, but have a more cohesive management plan with, with definitive directions. I talked to the, the Waterways Committee Chair today just to get, you know, his takeaway on getting the revisions or the recommendations. And they may be duly needed to look at, and we should probably look at those. But he was surprised to, to, to get them too. And, you know, we talked about what the work that they're doing, looking at the landings and the managements and, and whatnot. But, you know, we, again, this was about a bigger picture and inclusive to the Trap Dock. So that's where I am. I'm just a little bit, this is almost like too much for us. I don't want to beat a dead horse in discussing this, and, and I'm sorry if this is, you know, wasting some of the time that we need to talk on other matters today. But that's where I was, that I feel like this is a little too premature, and that I, the direction we were looking at is more about what kind of divisional oversight there is and, and what committee should be taking a look at it.
Yes, I would react, Shereen, to what you just said. The, I was a little surprised to see the regulations. I, I understand that perhaps we may, we may need them, and it's, I think it's great someone's looking at. But I was, I, I took your, your motion, or your suggestion, your motion as, was, who, who directs traffic? Who adjudicates conflicts? For example, we're going to, we're erecting the building, there's going to be an ice machine. Well, who's going to run the ice machine? How, who's going to get ice? When are they going to get it? Who are they going to pay? Who, you know, who's, who's docking when and how? Same, the same type of issues that we have at the fish pier, although they are less. I, I understand there's less traffic there. But there will come a time when we're going to want to have to those types of questions answered. And there'll be operational issues that will be day-to-day, operational issues that have to go somewhere. So, and I think...
I would like to add something to that, if you may.
Okay, go ahead.
Was that, when talking to the, the Waterways Committee Chair, he is, he expressed to me when we were talking about the, the, the committee, and, I mean, the staff, divisional oversight, is sometimes issues will come up and questions will be asked of the staff, and they'll say, well, that's not my purview. That's somebody else's purview. So there's this sort of like, not a cohesive look at, at, at all this. And I understand the complications around the idea that this is waters and landings, or waters and piers. And there, but I just think that we, we're going to, going forward, I think that we're going to have a lot of different issues in regard to our access to public landings and waterways.
And I, and I think it's more of an integrated approach, to be honest with you. Corey?
No, the only, only thing I want to add is the, seemed to be a little bit of a breakdown in communication on this issue, only in the sense that the Waterways had their meeting last week. It was kind of characterized as an emergency meeting, and there was some sense of urgency that this had to be dealt with yesterday. And they weren't crystal clear of what they were discussing, really, to what scope of it. So I just think we needed this to kind of make clear of, you know, what we're asking, what they are going to proceed with their process. Because I talked to the Waterways Chairman also, and, you know, he wanted clarification of, from, of timing. Like, you know, what is the timetable you want us to, to do this in? So, and I felt a little bit caught off guard because I know you'd discussed this, you know, at previous meetings, but I wasn't aware, at least at last week's Waterways meeting, of like an urgency on the topic. So that's, that's where I got lost in the shuffle, so.
Anybody else? Michael? So, where are we?
Well, from my perspective, I still haven't had my questions answered in, in, in what I was looking for. Who, who should be overseeing our waterway, I mean, our landings and docks, aside from Aunt Lydia's Cove? Should it be Waterways, or should it be an amalgam of, of all those other committees that are on the water? And again, what division of the sta- of division of natural resources is actually the, the oversight for the landings and the docks?
Okay.
Or piers? Those are the two questions that I just wanted to...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Or a recommendation from the town manager as to what she feels is that appropriate staffing?
So I'll go to Dr. Bob, and then Stuart's at the podium as well. So Dr. Bob, go ahead, and then Stuart.
Yeah, if, if I may, the, the way that we at the staff level are approaching this, and maybe there was some miscommunication on, you know, exactly what you were looking for. But the way we were approaching this and the way it made the most sense to us is that the Trap Dock and ninety Bridge Street are very similar to the fish pier because they are intended to have, they're both, they're similar to the fish pier and they're different. The fish pier is primarily for the commercial fishermen with a minor recreational component, if you will. Trap Dock and ninety Bridge Street are more fifty-fifty. You know, commercial fishing as well as supporting the recreational boater. But we felt that they differed from a lot of the other town landings just by the nature of their structures and the larger commercial fishing component to them. You know, we all know how busy Trap Dock gets when the fishing fleet moves around to the South Coast. And, you know, if they can't get over the bar in Chatham Harbor, they will move to Stage Harbor and fish out of there. And, and so the Trap Dock takes on significant importance. And that's the reason why the town purchased the property when we did, was to preserve that access on the south side. So we looked at as Trap Dock and ninety Bridge Street because commercial fishing was going to be a significant component of their use, that it made sense to basically manage them in pretty much the similar fashion to the fish pier. That's why we put the regulations where we did. You know, in the section of the consolidated waterways bylaw, which was, talks about the, the fish pier and docking permits at the fish pier. We added a section on docking permits at ninety Bridge Street. And then we added the section on management-specific recommendations for the Trap Dock and ninety Bridge Street. We did not put it into the town landing regulations, which are for the more rural, if you will, landings where we don't have a lot of facilities. You know, with the possible exception of Riders Cove. But because of both ninety Bridge and Trap Dock had piers and potentially buildings and ice machines, we felt that that was the appropriate place, which would put them, you know, under the, the management oversight of the harbor master division as opposed to coastal resource, just because they are going to have a fairly significant commercial fisheries aspect to it. In terms of their day-to-day operation, you know, I spoke to that, that we don't feel it's necessary to have somebody stationed there yet. Now, we may get to that point at some point in the future when their, you know, their use becomes similar to the fish pier. You know, I think we're all wondering what's going to happen to the fish pier over the long term with the shoaling and all that takes place. Will, you know, Stage Harbor become the primary fisheries area? Who knows? And if it does, maybe the Trap Dock will require oversight. You know, the Trap Dock is really set up as a self-service facility, if you will. So a fisherman coming in, you know, offloads fish either into his own personal truck or into a, you know, a tractor trailer that can back up. They can get ice now, thanks to the grant that we received through the Gulf of Maine Institute to put the ice machine in there. That ice machine will basically be self-service. But we put some requirements or some regulations governing its use into the consolidated waterway regulations. You know, we're not going to have somebody, you won't have to call somebody to say, hey, I want to come over and get ice. Can you come unlock it for me, kind of thing? You know, we may get there if there is significant abuse of the, you know, the, the self-service aspects of that. But, you know, we're, we're going to basically not head down that road right from the get-go because of the increase in staffing and, and oversight that it would require. So we're proposing that the oversight of Trap Dock and ninety Bridge Street would rest with the harbor master's division, mainly because, at least for Trap Dock, they're immediately adjacent to it. And they have cameras on it already to oversee what goes on. While coastal resources tends to deal with all the other landings, you know, Cow Yard, Battlefield, Riders Cove, and all those other places. But under the general oversight umbrella of the Waterways Advisory Committee, and I know that Waterways is, you know, kind of maybe a misnomer, if you will, because obviously getting to the water and accessing the water through, through the town landings and facilities is critical to the rest of the things that the Waterways Advisory Committee would be dealing with. You know, it's one thing, it, it doesn't necessarily make sense to us to have one committee that only deals with the water side of it, and in another committee that deals specifically with the land side. And that, you know, that's been an issue from the staffing level as well over the years. That, you know, kind of that line between coastal resources and harbor master sometimes gets, gets cloudy just because of the nature of, of the activity and the fact that that activity may require both land side as well as water side. But we've done our best to try to, you know, clearly define what, which one stops where and then who takes responsibility for, you know, the other side of it. But, you know, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's not black and white.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Dr. Bob. Stuart, welcome?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't think I can add anything to, to that. The Waterways Committee, from a committee standpoint, from my tenure, has always been, you know, the committee to go to for town landings or water-related issues. They're, they so often interact. So that has been the committee. They, in fact, spearheaded the purchase of Old Mill Boatyard back in the early eighties and, and carried that through to fruition. So they also undertook a lot of the improvements, the CFIP grant improvements for Little Mill Pond, Crow's Pond, and, and those town landings that were done under the early and mid eighties. So historically, they've been a pretty active group. If you wanted to, I mean, we have four water-related committees now. That's a, that's a, that's a lot of committees. Now, we have a lot of waterfront. So I don't think that that's particularly problematic. Adding to them might be, you know, I'm kind of intrigued with Shereen's suggestion about a, you know, different members from different committees to form some sort of a, some sort of a group, or adding to the number of people you have on Waterways and to include those, those types of folks that you're talking about. That may be a, I'm not sure we need it, but certainly something to, to consider. Like Bob pointed out, we've, we provide the oversight to the Trap Dock because we're literally fourteen feet away. We're frequently, ninety Bridge Street doesn't require a lot of oversight. It may in the future, as Bob points out, we're back and forth to the drop bridge all the time anyway. So that's a, that's kind of an easy one to deal with as well. You know, we enforce and, and are the regulatory authority for all of the town landings as well. So they do often interact, kind of unusual in, in our community. That, that's not always the case in other communities, but that's how it's been for, you know, not that it's the right way, but it's been like that for twenties, twenty-odd years.
Okay. Ms. Davis, and then I have a comment as well.
Yeah, I, I can understand the logic behind all of that. And, you know, as I said, this did start out as the committee review. One of the things that I, I just can't, you know, I'm just trying to, to wrap my head around is, is the idea of having more of a cohesive sort of system here that, you know, I, I think Riders Cove is probably equally busy as a commercial offloading facility, you know, for lobster guys, shellfishing, and musslers, and, and the striped bass fisheries and, and everything else. And that's overseen by coastal resources, but doesn't really have a big purview or review or oversight by, by, you know, the similar terms that Aunt Lydia's Cove and, and the perceived Trap Dock would have. So that's just where I'm just seeing that there's this sort of mixture. Now, whether it has to be a more of a boutique management, I think that's probably Jill's call at, you know, of all. But I, and I understand that the Waterways has been the default committee for oversight of all the landings and regulations and initiatives that have happened. But I'm not sure if we have clearly defined that. And the question had come up, when the Trap Dock was just there, is there a need for, you know, an Aunt Lydia's Cove-type committee to oversee it from its commercials perspective? That was one issue. But that's where, that's where I'm at. And I'm just, I don't think we're far off. I just, you know, this has just been, you know, let's fine-tune this a little more and see if there's a better way to do this that, that, you know, creates a better cohesive management system for our town landings and, and piers and whatnot.
Thank you, Shereen. You know, I, I totally get it on Riders Cove. I spent a lot of time there in the summertime, and it's extremely busy. Tuna, striped bass, mussels, shellfish, fish, I mean, it's extremely busy. I can't wait to see it improved over time. Next steps here, are you going to have a public hearing is what the next step is, Bob? And come one, come all at Waterways? That's, that's the next step?
The next step is this, this will go back to the Waterways Committee. It's on their meeting for the sixteenth.
Okay.
They will get another, you know, shot at the apple, if you will, on what's been proposed. Any further changes they might want to see? And then I would expect that their meeting on the sixteenth, they will set a date for a public hearing of the proposed regulation changes.
So just...
And we'll advertise that. We'll let the board know when that's going to be. You know, and then we'll hold, then they'll hold the public hearing for further public input.
And, and I'm, you know, again, my pea brain, you know, it's on a weekend, and I've got a scallop or unloading scallops. I've got two or three of those guys stacked up, and then I've got recreational people. This is over at the Trap Dock. Then I've got people wanting to get fuel, and commercial boy wanting to get fuel, and blah, blah, blah. Now, I'm making it up because I don't know if that scenario ever happens, but I can imagine it could, especially in the summertime. So I just don't know how, how you adjudicate conflict, how you, if there's... Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like we adjudicate everywhere else.
That's what's in the regulations. Regulations address some of those concerns.
On the weekends as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Seven day.
Okay. Shereen?
I kind of like to hear from Jill what her thoughts are on the whole.
Yeah, I was, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking, though, maybe we should hold on the regulations until we can have a staff-level discussion to make sure they're consistent with what the select board wants to put forward with, under the, the title of the committee oversight. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's premature to, to look at some of the regulations, unless the board's fine with, you know, having a docking fee, a docking permit, a fee going to the whiff. I mean, these are some of the details at, like, nine o'clock. I'm not so sure that you want to get into, if you want us to flesh it out some more with, I guess, a recommendation to you, or...
Go ahead, Stuart.
Well, if I might, I, I think, I, I know I was, I won't speak for others, kind of surprised that we, that we jumped into regulations. There was nobody particularly asking for them. So I think these are pretty benign. There's nothing really earth-shattering there, other than the ice machine, which is not earth-shattering either. It's just new. So there's no hurry to this. We can wait. There's nobody, you know, at one point, as one of the commercial fishermen pointed out, he said, at a maximum, there's twenty boats using this dock.
Okay.
What's all the hoopla? So while I support the regulations, there's, we're not, we don't have to do this tomorrow. We don't have to do it till... we don't have to do it till spring, so you do have time.
And I...
Or never.
I agree, I agree. I mean, there are some concerning things in the language of, in the draft, as far as boat sizes, usage of the boat, you know, size of boats going up onto the dock, and, and, you know, we would be talking about the Wolf Fund, too. I mean, this is a funding issue. So, I really think that I would like to just table this, and let's just step back a little bit and look at whether we need to, you know, really give distinct direction to the committee as to what they should be working on, whether we, you know, as, as a board. And, and then Jill maybe can have a staff-level conversation about, or whether Jill can bring back some recommendations, whether she feels that this should be a, a change in, in, you know, staffing, division oversight, or whatever. But just to hear it from that perspective, I'd be comfortable. Not to make a big, you know, upset or change here, it was just simply a definition. That was it.
It's one of the advantages, to go back a few years with the creation of natural resources, is that all of these functions are under one department, as opposed to kind of spread all over the place.
Right.
So, that was an effort, I think, to, you know, kind of get it corralled, if you, so to speak.
Well, I appreciate everybody's time and energy on this.
Okay.
I just think it's a step back.
One last thing, Waterways Committee, just so you, we don't lose sight of it, they have their charge. They were, they were created by Town Meeting. Town Meeting gave them their charge, so it's kind of, unless you want to add or subtract to it through Town Meeting, it is right, it's right there.
You said Aunt Lydia's Cove?
I'm sorry. Waterways.
Oh, Waterways, okay, okay, yeah, okay, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Thanks, Stuart.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we are, the next, I, I, item on the agenda, committee appointments. We are not going to deal with committee appointments tonight. I am going to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. We've had, Mr. Bean has waited patiently here, and I, I saw Megan here earlier, so...
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, she did text me to say she does have to go, because she's got to be in Boston early in the morning.
Okay, all right. I certainly appreciate her commitment, and she was here just about all the evening, and this has been a very lengthy meeting. So, we'd like to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Davis?
I.
Yep.
A present.
Mr. Shell.
Present.
Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Bean.
Present.
And Mr. Dykens is present as well. Usually, Mr. Nacasta was here to read this, this motion, but I turn to Ms. Davis.
I'll be second string on this, okay? I move that the Affordable Housing Trustee Fund, Trust Fund Board of Trustees, in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 6, go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, taking lease, or value of real property, 30 Ocean View Terrace, if such discussion may be, have, if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating composition of the governmental body with no return to open session.
Second.
Okay, super. Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Davis?
I.
Mr. Shell?
I.
Mr. Metters?
I.
And the chair says I as well. We will not be returning to open session. Good night, Chatham. Thank you very much.